Okay, everyone, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our District Four Town Hall. I am Councilwoman Dionne Falk, your Councilwoman for District Four, and I'd like to thank you for coming and welcome you to tonight's event. Give yourself a round of applause for getting here. And I'm gonna ask our mayor, and I see Councilman Padilla here, I'm gonna ask both of them to come on up. I'm going to allow them to give greetings to you guys before we get started, and I will start, you want me to start with Councilman Padilla? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start with Councilman Padilla, and he is the Councilman for District Two. A little bit about Councilman Padilla, I am going to love him each and every day. He is that quick wit, humor person, and he keeps us laughing so hard behind closed doors. And some days, we have really hard days, but I can always depend on this one right here to get me to laugh about something and just brighten up my day. So I really appreciate him. Please welcome Councilman Padilla, District Two.
Well, thank you very much. See, now you guys are expecting me to entertain you and give you some jokes, you know? So, no, really, for me, it's about just thank you. Thank you sincerely to each and every one of you for your continued support and commitment to our community and overall to our city. None of the changes that we've brought to the city of Inglewood would be possible without the staff that we have, the leadership team that we have, but just as important, our leadership team in the community, each and every one of you. So I want to thank you for taking time out of your evening to come here tonight to hear about what's happening in our beautiful city of Inglewood, and more specifically in District Number Four. And I would be remiss if I didn't invite you on June 10th to Fire Station 172 on Centinela for an appreciation pancake breakfast and free raffles to recognize and say thank you to our firefighters that are out there every single day and put their life on the line. And then in August, we'll be doing another event called National Night Out to thank our police officers for all that they do. As you know, I'm a retired police officer with the mayor for many years in Santa Monica, so public safety is important to us. So you're invited to these events. But again, thank you, thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman, for all you do for our city and for putting this event together. Have a great night.
Okay, so our Councilman Eloy Morales, he is District Three. Please keep him in your prayers. He actually had a family, an extended family member that passed, so he had to go to a viewing this evening. And then our newest council member, Gloria Gray, I don't believe, I don't know if she's gonna be able to make it. So if she comes, I will definitely introduce her. And so now I'm going to introduce our mayor, our wonderful mayor of Inglewood that I really tell him all the time, he is my mentor. He has taught me so much while I've been on this council, and I look to him and all my other council members for guidance and direction to make sure that I do the best job that I can for District Four. And they're always there for me, always supporting me. You have no idea, I was maybe, I think I shared this story, I was a little bit nervous being the only woman on the council, but these guys have really taken me in and made me feel so welcome. And so they're my family at City Hall, and I appreciate them so much. And so please now welcome our wonderful mayor Buzz, James P. Buzz.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So, check this out. Dionne is such a conscientious, hardworking person. You know, she didn't say that, like, I make people laugh and make people feel good, because I don't, because I don't do that very much, because I'm, you know, I'm a very serious person, as are the rest of the council. But one of the things I've seen about Dionne, let me tell you something, she will call me anytime, weekend, day, night, about issues in the district. And I try to put things in perspective, and she says, no, but this just can't continue. So, so let me tell you something, she is my favorite. She fights for you guys all the time. Now, let's give her a big hand, okay? She deserves that. Now, how many of you were here the last time I was here? Could you raise your hand? Okay, all right, so it's about half. So unfortunately for those who've been here, you're gonna have to get to see this great video again. So Malcolm, if you would play, this is the state of the city as of 2022. We have to change this every year because new stuff happens every year. So this is the end of 2022. There was a time when Inglewood was rightfully known as the city of champions. In the eighties, we were home of the three-peat world champion Showtime Lakers, the L.A. Kings, and we sold out concerts at the Forum. The Hollywood Park racetrack drew an average of 43,000 people six days per week. Then in 1999, the bright lights dimmed and the music began to die. The Lakers and Kings left for downtown L.A. for the Staples Center. Off-track betting caused racetrack attendance to dwindle, eventually to crowds of about 1,000 by 2012. The housing market crashed in 2008, and in 2010, our unemployment rate ballooned to over seventeen and one-half percent. We negotiated an agreement in 2011 with Madison Square Garden to loan MSG $18 million for rehabilitation purposes of the Forum. MSG added $82 million to that loan, and in January of 2014, the Forum reopened and would become the number-one concert venue in California, marking the opening of a new chapter in the history of the city. In January 2015, the Inglewood City Council announced its pursuit of the Rams of St. Louis to relocate to our city, and over the next two years, the NFL would return to the L.A. market after two decades without a professional football team. Both the Rams and the Chargers would now call Inglewood, California their new home, playing at the world's most magnificent sports and entertainment arena, SoFi Stadium. In March of 2019, the Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles relocated their regional headquarters from Marina Del Rey to a newly renovated facility here in Inglewood. In August of 2021, YouTube and Google became official city partners, as Hollywood Park celebrated the official opening of a 6,000-seat YouTube theater with a ribbon-cutting ceremony. In September of 2021, the National Media Center for the NFL, the NFL Networks, opened its new 450,000-square-foot headquarters in the heart of the Hollywood Park Sports and Entertainment District. In that same month, the city celebrated the groundbreaking ceremony for what would be the premier basketball arena in the world, the Intuit Dome. In October of 2021, the L.A. Philharmonic hosted the grand opening of a Frank Gehry-designed orchestra hall at a cost of $18 million to house the Youth Orchestra L.A. program, under the direction of the legendary Gustavo Dudamel. Over 80% of the first class of that L.A. Philharmonic Youth Orchestra were Inglewood students. Showtime is the least creative space in our industrial park. We have renewed our infrastructure, stabilized our finances, cut our unemployment rate, while watching Inglewood property values soar to heights never to be imagined. Our families now have generational wealth within their homes to pass on to their children. Nike, the Rams, Chargers, Clippers, Lakers, the Dodgers, and HBO have invested in our youth by renovating our parks and school ballfields and our playgrounds. The Hollywood Park Tomorrow Project has done more than $800 million of business with minority-led and women-led disadvantaged businesses across all of the construction projects as of February 2022. Over $36 million alone have gone to wages for Inglewood residents during this construction. In February of 2022, the world would see that the new Inglewood was the home city of the Super Bowl LVVI champion Rams as they took on the Cincinnati Bengals. After 34 years without a professional sports championship, Inglewood was once again the city of champions. In 2023, the city will host WrestleMania XXXIX and the NCAA Championship Football Game. In 2024, the Clippers are scheduled to tip off and bring NBA basketball back to Inglewood. We are now one of the two finalists for the FIFA World Cup in 2026, and in 2028, the Summer Olympic Games will open and close, will host basketball, and possibly swimming competitions in the resurrected city of champions. All of this requires investments in our transportation infrastructure. We're now engaged in building the ITC, the Inglewood Transit Connector, a $1.2 billion overhead convenience that will connect the Crenshaw Line with the Sports Entertainment District of Inglewood. Like the legendary phoenix rising from the ashes, Inglewood has risen once again, continuing to soar to heights never before imagined. Welcome to Inglewood, where the only thing that has changed is everything. I'm gonna tell you guys something, like, I used to say I had the hardest job, you know, and I came back. We were about nine months away from not making payroll. We were in pretty bad shape as a city. Our property values were in the tank, and now, when they sell properties in Westchester, View Park, La Dara Heights, Baldwin Hills, Lemur Park, Westchester, they advertise them as Inglewood-adjacent. Now, when would you ever believe somebody trying to sell a house in Westchester would tout a reason to buy our property because you're near Inglewood? It was quite the opposite. I used to say I had the hardest job in town. I can probably say that I passed it on to Dr. James Morris, the county administrator of the IUSD. He now has the hardest job in town, and we all have to work with him, and we have to be honest with ourselves, because we did some things here in the city that the employees weren't happy about, because when you look, when you stand at the 30,000-foot level, you're looking at what's greatest benefit for all the residents, all the employees. We had to cut 129 positions from the city. We had to eliminate a false promise of lifetime medical and replace it with stipends for retirees. And people weren't happy about that. Not happy at all. They picketed the place where I lived at the time, and they passed out flyers with me in a top hat that said, "I was Scrooge," and the only saving grace was it was such a good picture of me. Such a good picture. But you guys, cities evolve, and everything isn't perfect, and everything is gonna be perfect for everybody at any given time. But what you try to do is, you try to move yourself forward so that the most people can benefit, that the most children can benefit from what happens in your community. And that's what I want to leave you with, that's what I want you to remember. And I want to thank you for all your support, for myself, the council people, for Dionne, because this is a lot of work to look after and try to be a vessel, to be a vessel for the lives of others. And in this city, it's very unique, because most councils, they have term limits, and everything is about being re-elected for the two or three terms that you're allowed to serve. There's no forward-thinking vision, because you're not gonna be here, and your objective is to stay elected. That's not our objective here. Our objective is to provide the foundation and a future for this community. So I want to thank you, all of you, for your support. I'm just entering my fourth term. In one year, I'll be the longest-serving mayor in the history of the city, and that's thanks to you, and I thank you.
All right, can we give our mayor and Councilman Padilla another round of applause for coming out? Thank you so much. And now I'd like to have our City of Inglewood representation. So our commissioners, I would love for them to stand up, and I'm gonna go around and ask you to just kind of say your name, what neighborhood of the city you live in, and then your commission, and whether you're a chair or not. So if you could please stand up, so I can acknowledge you. And then actually, if you don't mind, why don't we go on over to this microphone, so we can hear for, because we're live streaming, and I want to make sure that we get and we capture everybody, all of our representation here. So if you don't mind going on over to the microphone. Uh-oh, is it on? Hold on one second. Hold on one second, Lois. Is the mic on? There we go. All right.
Better talk.
Oh, yeah. I know, right? In the Renaissance on Chapman Lane.
The plane is off.
We're gonna be nice tonight, y'all, right? Go ahead, Lois.
My name is Lois Hale, and I live in the Renaissance, and I'm in District Four, and I'm a commissioner for the parking and traffic.
All right, thank you.
My name is Cheryl Shaw-Williams. I live in District Four in Century Heights, and I'm a commissioner for the planning and zoning.
Thank you so much, Cheryl.
Dorothy Cole, Commissioner for 25 years in District Four.
You forgot your, your commission.
Oh, I am a commissioner, and I might be retired, I'm not sure yet.
All right, thank you, Dorothy.
Hi, my name is Barbara Hibbler, District Four, newly-appointed chairperson for parking and traffic, under the direction of our mayor.
Yay, and she was newly appointed last week, wasn't it last week? So she's newly appointed, so congratulations to you, Ms. Hibbler.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Larry Springs. I live in District Number One. I'm the chair for the Planning Commission, thanks to Mr. Buzz, our illustrious mayor, and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Larry.
Good evening. I'm Henry Brown, Parks and Rec, District Four, and while I'm here, we will be having our meeting tomorrow, so we hope the public come out on the night float. God bless you.
Thank you so much. Hello, Helsie. Yes, hi.
Jose Balamares, Commissioner of Housing, District Three.
Thank you so much. Hi, Jose.
How are you?
All right, is that everyone? Okay, can we give all of our representatives, our commissioners, a round of applause? Thank you all so much for coming out. If there's any, maybe, community block club captains that want to stand up and be recognized as well, feel free. Yes, if you don't mind going to the mic real quick, any other block club captains, if you want to stand up and be recognized.
Good evening. My name is Maxine Barfield, and I'm from the La Moli Block Club, and that's in Imperial Village, if you don't know where that is.
All right, thank you so much.
My name is Kellin Atagori, and I'm from the Imperial Village on 117th Street between La Moli and Den.
All right, thank you. Okay, I think that will do it. Well, thank you all so much for coming out. I'm gonna give you a couple of updates, and then we're gonna get into our presentations. I just want to, first of all, let you know about some exciting events that's coming up in our city. The first one that I have is the Inglewood, City of Inglewood Music Festival. So this event is gonna be our first annual music festival, and I'm sure you're aware of a lot of other cities having music festivals. They have them in Gardena, Newport Beach Jazz Festival, let's see, in Los Angeles, Long Beach, just so many cities. Well, I was just thinking, well, why don't we have something like that right here in Inglewood? So now we got it. And so it's going down, y'all, it's going down. So I want you to put it on your calendar, it's June 24th, and the event will be in Darby Park. It is a free event. This event, what I, with the mayor and myself and other council members, we thought that it would be good to do a benefit concert to benefit our Inglewood Unified School District. And so Dr. Morris doesn't know that yet. So what we wanted to do is ask our residents, of course, the tickets are free, if you are so in kind to make some kind of donation to go towards our Inglewood Unified School District, we're gonna see what the pot of money looks like, and maybe we might be able to get some laptops for the school district, for some schools, or maybe some hotspots, or whatever we can do, just to make their lives a little easier at Inglewood Unified School District. So go to the website and make sure you register, and of course, like I said, it's a free event, but there's an opportunity to make a donation to, to go towards Inglewood Unified School District. So we would love it if you would do that. And then also, I'd like to make sure you're aware, in August, we are going to, District Four is going to have a back-to-school backpack event for our kids, for our babies. So I'll be coordinating with Inglewood Unified School District to make sure that our kids are there to get their free backpacks. The best thing about it is, I am joining efforts with our newly-elected Assembly Member of the 61st District, Tina McKinnon. Anybody know who she is? Y'all know who she is, all right. So I'm partnering up with her, and this is my second annual backpack event with her. It will be at, not Crenshaw Imperial, but it's at the Crenshaw Imperial Corner, and it's across the street from the shopping center that everybody is aware of, but it is gonna be held at the Imperial-Crenshaw Corner. So I will make sure that I send out more information on that. It's almost 90% planned, but please stay tuned for additional information. And if you have any grandkids or young kids that are still in school, please make sure that they come out and get a backpack. So that's what's happening in District Four. And with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and get started with our first presentation, Lieutenant Meeks, our lieutenant for District Four. And so I also asked Cinder Eller, our community service liaison, to come out too, but I think, I don't think she's feeling well today. So Lieutenant Meeks is always dependable. I want to make sure that you guys have his leave here with information to connect with him, because my office gets calls about different things happening in the district, and I want to make sure you know who to contact. He is the one, he is really good at organizing our district and responding when there is an issue. So I'm now gonna invite Lieutenant Meeks to come up and give some updates on what's happening in District Four.
All right, perfect.
Lieutenant.
My screen looks super bright.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Councilwoman. I was a little nervous at first, because I know I was the first presenter, and then we all watched the mayor talk, and I thought I was gonna have to follow him. So thank you, Councilwoman, for talking, and commissioners for standing up and talking. Like the picture says, my name is Jeffrey Meeks. I'm a lieutenant with Inglewood Police Department. I'm currently the night watch commander for Sunday night through Wednesday night. And I am also the District Four liaison for the Inglewood Police Department, in charge of quality of life issues and crime prevention. I want to touch on a couple topics, just to keep you guys informed in terms of what's going on in District Four, in terms of law enforcement and where we're at. First things first, I've worked for several council members in the past. All of them have been great, but I can tell you that Councilwoman Falk is really involved and hands-on, and is, in a nice way, really, really, really on top of things in terms of quality of life for you men and women who live and reside in District Four. There was an issue at 3544 West 116th Street that we've pretty much, as a city, have been dealing with since the beginning of the year. The resident at that particular location was placed into a care home. She was unable to take care of her home, and ultimately, some people moved into her home and took it over. Some vagrants, some trespassers. And with diligent work with Smith-Cinderella, who's not here, as well as Jerry Tucker from Code Enforcement, as well as the Councilwoman's office, they were able to track down the new owners. Councilwoman established and got together the team, which comprised the Police Department, Code Enforcement, Public Works, and we basically went down there with the new owners, and we got these people up out of that house. And we removed that blight from that particular community, which was right there on the corner of Yukon Avenue and 116th Street. It's been about three weeks now. That issue that was plaguing that particular street and those residents is gone, it's been removed, and that home is currently under construction, under remodel, and it should be up and on the market in three to four months. But that's a, that is a situation in which the Councilwoman heard about it, she jumped on it, put the team together, and we got on it. So that's what we're about in District Four. I know a lot of you guys are concerned about traffic, and street takeovers has become a national issue. And I know when you watch the news, you see street takeovers and how deadly they are, and how catastrophic they are in the city of Los Angeles, in the city of Compton, and we're not immune to it, but we have a different way of combating street takeovers. We've been really good over the last year in terms of how we combat street takeovers. I will say that this past Sunday, they kind of caught us slipping, and they took over Imperial and Yukon for a certain number, for a certain amount of time. I will say, once we got mobilized and we got out there, not only did we disperse the crowd, but we ended up towing five vehicles, we took 11 people to jail, and we recovered a loaded firearm. So unlike our neighboring jurisdictions, we will not allow that to happen in our city. You will never see us, or see you guys on the news, talking about the police didn't show up, and they were there for hours, and nothing happened. We're gonna take, we're gonna take full advantage of, of the law, and we have a zero tolerance in terms of street takeovers right now. So that's where we're at with the street takeovers. And if it comes back next weekend, we'll be ready, and we do have a plan in place to take more people to jail and impound more vehicles. In terms of our traffic control, Inglewood Police Department has two traffic control signals. I know you residents in District Four, you've seen it, you've seen one of the two. I was able to commandeer one of the two that we have. It was on Van Ness for a while, now it's on Crenshaw for a while, and I'm probably gonna have that moved to Prairie. I've looked at the data for the last 60 days. We, as a district, have experienced 28 traffic accidents spread out throughout District Four. In a 60-day period, 28 is pretty good. Out of those 28, 14 were actually injury-involved traffic accidents. None, none of them were fatal, but there were 14 people that actually did get hurt, did get transported to the hospital. And looking at the data, a lot of our traffic accidents are happening along that Crenshaw corridor between 116th and Century and Prairie, between Imperial and 109th. That's a short distance to have four or five traffic accidents happen. So that's why I'm looking at moving our traffic signal, our traffic sign, to Prairie, in conjunction with the, the current construction that's going on on Prairie with Intuit Dome. I think it might be advantageous to go ahead and just remind the traveling public about slowing down on Prairie Avenue. Within those traffic accidents, it ranges a broad spectrum from rear-end collisions to head-on collisions to side swipes. We've had a couple vehicle-versus-pedestrian traffic accidents, and a couple vehicle-versus-bicyclists traffic accidents. But nevertheless, they've been spread out where I'm not concerned that they're happening at one particular location. We've had two in the intersection of Imperial and Crenshaw, we've had two in the intersection of Imperial and Prairie, we've had one in the intersection of Crenshaw and Century, and they've been spread out throughout the district. So we're out there. So we're out there. Um, we have one motorcycle officer right now. Um, and he's being pulled in 10 different directions every single day. And I'm pulling in about five of those directions for your district. So we will have a presence. Our patrol officers are out there as well. In between them being proactive and answering radio calls, they have been directed to go within the neighborhoods and sit in certain intersections, certain corners, and just try to be a presence and deter people from speeding through stop signs and, and providing a unsafe traveling route throughout your neighborhoods. So we are working on it and we're gonna continue to work on it. And if you have any issues with traffic, I, I tell everybody, do not hesitate to call us and make us do our job. You are our eyes and ears out there and you know exactly what's going on in your neighborhoods and on your streets. If there's an issue, call us and we will be responsive and respond to that. In terms of the crime data, looking at the crime data for the last 60 days, that 60 days is April 1st through May 31st. And I wanna preface it with, you all know the City of Inglewood is divided into four districts. Each of the four districts, the city went through redistricting last year. So each of the four districts is pretty much even now. We're talking 27, 28,000 residents per district. Um, on top of the fact that we have shopping and, and businesses and things of that nature. Despite that, District Four is accounting for about 22% of the overall crime, which is pretty good in my estimation being that it's divided evenly amongst four districts, yet we don't have 25% of the crime. We're teeter-tottering on 21.5% to 22% of the overall crime. As a city, we've only experienced three homicides so far in 2023, um, which is pretty good. And burglaries are down, robberies are down, thefts are up. And I don't wanna theorize about why thefts are up and, you know, consequences for people that commit crimes, things that, and things of that nature. Nevertheless, thefts are up. So I want everybody to just be aware and be vigilant when you're out shopping, when you're out around. Home burglaries are pretty much down. In the last 60 days, we've experienced 36 burglaries in District Four. That's about, we're talking about one every other day. So those of you that are vigilant in terms of knowing what's going on in your neighborhoods and on your streets, please continue to be vigilant. Continue to talk with your neighbors, continue to look out. And again, if you see something that doesn't fit in terms of how your neighborhood evolves on a daily basis, do not hesitate to call us and allow us to come out and ensure that things are okay on your particular street. All right? One final thing, in terms of homelessness, it's a national issue. And unfortunately, there are a lot of laws that kind of tie what law enforcement, what certain entities, especially local government entities, can do in terms of homelessness. I know Councilwoman Falk has been on, on this for at least the last year in terms of getting LA County on board, getting the state and Caltrans on board and coming up with plans and methods and trying to put all the stakeholders together to try to come up with a plan to alleviate some of the homelessness that we experience in District Four. We're continuing to work on it. As a police department, we assist in cleanups on a daily, on a, on a weekly basis, monthly basis. We do cleanups right, right at the off-ramps and on-ramps of the freeway embankments. We're on Prairie and 111th. On a monthly basis, cleaning up over there. We've addressed Crenshaw right there at 117th, I thought freeway off-ramp. And we're in other districts as well. So we'll continue to do that. If you see something that doesn't, again, that affects your neighborhood, call us. It's a crime to block the sidewalk, so we will definitely come and we'll ensure that your sidewalks are free and clear of tents and people lingering and hanging out on the sidewalks and things of that nature. And we'll do what we can within the confines of the law to make sure that your quality of life is not impacted by homelessness until the lawmakers within the county and the state come up with a more feasible long-term plan. But with that being said, I'm pleased and I'm proud of where District Four is right now. Like I said, our crime is a little, little bit lower than some of the other districts, which is good. And again, Councilwoman Falk is, in a nice way, on me on a regular basis to make sure the quality of life within our district is good. So again, thank you very much. And if there are any issues, do not hesitate to call the Police Department and make us do our jobs and hold us accountable. All right?
Um, do we have any questions for Lieutenant Meeks? Yes, okay. Okay. And then if you have a question real quick, if you don't mind making your way to that microphone, because we're live streaming, we wanna make sure we capture all your questions. It's right over there in the corner.
If you need to get ahold of me, my cell phone number, my department's cell phone number is 310-502-8891. If I don't answer right away, please leave a voicemail or text me and let me know and then I'll get back to you as soon as I can. But 310-502-8891. And then again, I work Sunday through Wednesday night, 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM. The Watch Commander's line is 310-412-5206. And obviously, you call 911 if you have an emergency. If you have a non-emergency but you still request a police presence, please call our non-emergency line at 310-412-8852. Or, ooh, don't quote me on that one. I might have to come back on that one. I've got a lot of numbers rolling into my head. But I will give you the non-emergency number before I leave. But call us and again, we're here for you. We're here seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year.
There's a question over here at the mic. Uh-oh, hold on one second.
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you for the report, Officer Meeks. Uh, I'm Ken Ferris. I'm a homeowner in Inglewood. And the 4th of July is coming up. Is there any plans to, um, to deal with some of the types of fireworks that are gonna be done in Inglewood? Because a few years ago, I mean, it was really like bombs, you know? But, uh, when I called, when I called the, uh, police, they did come out, you know, and talk with the neighbors. But is there any anticipation about what might be happening on the 4th of July?
Yes. Historically, and again, we're gonna do it this year, usually about two weeks out of 4th of July. We put a task force together, um, and we work in conjunction with Code Enforcement. And we go out and we try to confiscate fireworks. Because as you know, people like to test their fireworks leading up to July 4th. So we're working on, on, uh, tips that we get from certain informants. We're working on the, the radio calls that are generated by you all in terms of the fireworks and where they're coming from. And we go out and we confiscate. On 4th of July, it's a holiday for us, so we try not to allow anyone off unless there's an emergency. So we will be fully staffed on July 4th. And our officers will be out there responding to radio calls, but also responding to the fireworks and doing what we can to try to, to lessen the blow, so to speak, of the fireworks. Um, so, you know, that's the plan. Um, it's not the best plan, but it's, it's better than most. And it's what we try to do to alleviate some of the angst that you all experience on July 4th with fireworks going off all night long.
That's a great question. And, um, really quick, um, the number for Officer Meeks is 310-412-5211.
Thank you.
That was, that was, isn't that the right number? Non-emergency, non-emergency, 310-412-5211. And then we have another question at the mic.
Good evening. My name is Lori and I've been an Inglewood resident for over 40-plus years. I live over in Inglewood Knowles. I'm recently retired, going on two years. And since I've been home, uh, actually before I retired, I was working from home, but now that I'm fully retired, I have been noticing there's a serious uptick in, um, as, uh, Lieutenant Meeks, um, brought up about vandalism. And it personally has happened to me and I contacted the, uh, Inglewood Police Department a few weeks ago. Within the last three weeks of May, there has been a serious uptick in car thefts, uh, attempted car thefts. I have notified your office. I spoke to, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Falk. I called your office and talked to Malcolm. And we've had another incident this past Sunday. And I'm very concerned. And I don't know what's been going on. Um, I was told that we were gonna have more, uh, patrol. Since I called, I've only seen, seen two patrol over in our, in my area. And I have cams. I have cams, making sure I catch on the corners, all the near corners. And I'm not seeing, uh, the patrols as what I was told was gonna happen. So to you, um, Lieutenant, uh, Meeks, what's been going on with the vandalism with car thefts? Because it's been a serious problems and it has a serious uptick. And just not in my area. We've been having folks blow through stop signs. There's three stop signs by me. And they are like, just, like they don't exist. We have the blinking, we have the lights. And it seems like people fail to not even see that there's a stop sign. And there's kids. I have my grandkids. There's other kids. People are walking their dogs. And these folks are coming off of Crenshaw and they're just blowing through, I mean, just, I, I'm not kidding. They have to be doing at least 40 to 50 miles. And it's very dangerous. I've called multiple times and nothing has happened. I've requested for officer, a motorcycle officer. Because if they sit there, of course, I know they have other things, but if, if they're there, people will deter saying, oh, we know, we can't be blowing through. I have even requested, hey, why can't we have, um, what you call it, the, uh, uh, what you call it, the blocks, speed bumps. Thank you, speed bumps. So there's been a serious uptick over there in Inglewood Knowles. So, oh, and one other thing. I'm off of Thoreau. My neighbor that's on ARDAF, there is a house and that has been in construction for, for years. And Forest Control has, uh, um, the control officer has been out, has ticketed. But there's a porta potty in front of this construction in this house. It's just a wood frame. It's supposed to have been updated. They have notified the owner and he's, I think because he has money, but he, he's, he's been dragging this out. And we've been have homeless people coming in our neighborhoods because there's a porta potty in front of that property. And we're, people are coming off of Crenshaw using that porta potty. And no one has, the neighbors said they have called. There's no action being taken here. And this has been a while. And, and I'm not saying this as a, oh, a few months. I'm talking about over a year that there's been an issue. You, you know what I'm talking about.
Okay, thank you. So...
In terms of that porta potty house situation, I'll get that address today and I'll forward that information to Code Enforcement. Um, that's something that we're gonna have to enforce with the owner of that particular property. I'll definitely get that information and I'll forward it to my officers so we can be aware of exactly what's going on in terms of homelessness. In terms of the vehicle thefts, like, like I stated earlier, we've experienced 36 vehicle thefts in District Four in the last 60 days. It, it's an issue that's been around for decades. We're doing the best we can in terms of trying to be a presence up and down our neighborhood streets, as well as our main thoroughfares, to try to prevent crime. The best information I could tell you is just call us. Again, if you see something that looks out of place, call us so we can get there. Um, even right now as we speak, I have two patrol units that are assigned directly to District Four. But those two patrol units are covering entirety of District Four right now. So on top of them being proactive and trying to conduct traffic stops and prevent drug transactions and things of that nature, they also have to respond to radio calls. Um, and there are quite a few radio calls that are generated, um, from homes and businesses within District Four. So we're doing the best we can. And in terms of the traffic enforcement, again, those same patrol cars, those same patrol officers are expected throughout their shifts to also dedicate some time to some of our many intersections which require a police presence, such as 118th and Wilkie and intersections like that that have been brought to my attention over the last few months. So we're out there. We're trying. I'm not gonna lie and tell you that we're gonna get it fixed tonight or tomorrow. It's a work in progress, but as long as we're aware of it, it gives us a goal to work towards to fix those issues. And so that's what we're gonna do. And like I stated, right now, we have one motorcycle officer. We're in the process of revamping internally, so hopefully by the end of the year, beginning of next year, we have a revamped traffic division. But right now, that one motorcycle officer is being pulled in every which direction. So again, I'm doing the best I can to get him down to District Four when I can to give some attention to some, some specific intersections. But we're gonna get it fixed. Just give me some time.
One other question is, is your thinking, does CHP need to, to help with some of the stops? Is that, is that an option?
It, it's an option. It's a costly option. And that's... We, we had a task force with the CHP years ago, about 10 years ago, where we actually went into an agreement with CHP and they came out for a couple of months and they helped us do some enforcement, things of that nature. Um, but bringing another entity in like that, it's costly and there's agreements that are between our city leadership and state leadership and things of that nature. So it's not as easy as just saying, hey, CHP, come help us. But it's always an option that's on the table. That's up to the Police Department leadership to kind of explore that particular option and see how viable it is.
Can we give Lieutenant Meeks a round of applause? I do want to, um, let you know to the lady, um, our resident right there that just spoke. I was actually, um, coming home from dropping my kids off at school this morning and I saw somebody run through a red light. And it is happening all the time. So when I tell you it's not just District Four, it's citywide, it's statewide, it's nationwide. There is something happening. So the best thing that we can do is protect ourselves. Don't be the first one to enter into an intersection. Make sure you look both ways, even though the light turned green. Uh, make sure it's safe before you enter and make sure that nobody has, um, ran the green light or a red light because we just have to protect ourselves now. Um, so thank you again, Lieutenant Meeks, for those, um, public safety updates. And, um, I'm gonna, um, ask Chris Jackson, he is our Economic and Community Development Director, to come forward for our next presentation. While he does, I do want to take this opportunity to acknowledge a couple of people in the audience. Um, first of all, we have our, um, Michelle Chambers. She is from our Department of Justice, Ram Banta's office. So please give her a round of applause for joining us. We have our newly, um, newly-established church. Um, we have Pastor Jay here. And, um, why don't you go ahead real quick and let everybody know the name of your church? Go ahead.
My name is Pastor Jason Shuttler. I'm a church at the College of the United Church. We have church at Central Park Elementary School, uh, on Sunday mornings at 9:00 AM. Uh, I'm also, uh, Inglewood Knowles resident on the Hudson and Gold Street. So I'm honored to be, uh, be here and, uh, experience this. So we're here to serve as a church.
Thank you so much for joining us. And if you ever get a free Sunday, you wanna check out a new church, please, um, feel free to join Pastor Jay. I attended that church last Sunday and it was a wonderful church service. They're doing amazing things there. So thank you guys for so much for joining us. I'm gonna ask Chris Jackson to come forward with his presentation. Thank you so much, Chris, for being here. Appreciate you all the time. Thank you.
Hello, Inglewood. What a great opportunity we have to be here in the City of Inglewood. Some of you guys know me. Anybody ever seen me before? I'm, I'm kinda in the, in the backdrop sometimes. Excited about the role that I play, particularly in partnering with, uh, Councilwoman Falk and all she means to this district. Yeah, I go back to the Franklin days. So I, I, I kinda been through this many, many times. I wanna share some things with you. Have a short period of time to get there. Just, I'm the Director of Economic and Community Development. Uh, I oversee several divisions, one of which is Code Enforcement. So you, we're just hearing the question about Code Enforcement, the porta potty. We're gonna get that porta potty out of there. We'll, we, I'm gonna have my staff focus on that. We'll, we, I'm gonna have my staff focus on that immediately. Sometimes those are, are issues that we just need to become aware of. Construction activity sometime goes, uh, longer than expected. And we try and address those issues. And certainly working in partnership with Councilwoman Falk to make sure that we're addressing these, these, these issues. And in particular, again, the issue is communication. The more you communicate, tell us what's going on, the more we can do something about it. The other part of that communication is to be able to tell you what's happening. Some of these things take a little time to be able to address. You just need to be, we'll inform you of where we are in the process. Sometimes we go in the code enforcement side all the way up to, um, actually a criminal complaint where we actually go across over to Thurgood Marshal Courts. And we file papers against individuals so that we can get them to do the things that they need to do. The other division I oversee is the planning division. So a lot of the planning activities that you see going on in the, in the city is also in, in my purview. And then, um, building, building on the, on the construction side. So I'm gonna go through, and I, I, I always like to talk about some good things. I see I got a preacher here in the house, that's good. Uh, I got some help, uh, you know, I got some help from my brother over there. Uh, those of you who know me, my background, I'm a preacher. I'm a husband, a father. My wife approved that picture of me up there, I want y'all to know. I got my wife to give me a thumbs up to make sure that picture was there. We good? All right, so a lot of exciting things happening in, in your, in, in district. I'm also a resident of the city of Inglewood, District Number Two. So my councilwoman is just up here, uh, Councilman Padilla, sharing some information with you. So I have, like you, a vested interest in seeing this city thrive, seeing it mature and grow. And for us to address all the issues that important, quality of life amongst other things. There's some exciting things happening particularly in your district. Uh, you guys know Hollywood Park, the good, the bad, the ugly, but there's a lot of good. Right? We have all these spectacular things. You guys are the center. You're like the hub of all the activities going on in, in the city. And you are really the heartbeat of where we are as a city and what makes us so attractive. And as the mayor said before, why they say, uh, in Westchester, Inglewood adjacent, you know? That's why that's happening, because what's happening in your district. All the exciting, big projects are happening in your district in particular. There's others going on in other districts, but this is the heartbeat of the city. Now, one of the things I hate having is a presentation behind me because I can't see it. So I'm gonna tell you, I think we're talking about the Cosm, right? Cosm? Oh, there it is, okay. Thank you, thank you for telling me where it is. Uh, the, the Cosm, which is, you guys know Hollywood Park is just extraordinary. It's growing. If you haven't had an opportunity to go over to Hollywood Park, you know you can visit the lake. You could drive onto the property. You can actually access it, you could park your car and you could go walk over to the lake and begin to experience some of the things that are happening there. You also know that all, there's, there's construction activity going on there. One of the things happening is, is a development called, uh, the, um, excuse me, um, we're talking about the, the theater, and this is Synapolis. So we have Synapolis coming in. Now, who here remembers when there was a theater in Inglewood? So what, what, what's sitting on the drive-in property now? Costco is on the drive-in. I used to go to that drive-in. My mama would put me in the back of the car and y'all know how it is. Eat that real crazy pizza that was really hard and, you know, but it, that, that, now we finally, before that, do you guys know the Fox Theater? Heard of Fox, that's going way back when streetcar was going down Market Street. We finally, after years and years and years, are having our own theater. Twelve screens, one IMAX. Twelve hundred seats. You don't have to now go all the way down to Torrance. You don't have to go over to Culver City. You're gonna be able to come right to your own neighborhood and go to the theater. How about that? You know how excited I am? I have seven kids. I've been waiting on this a long time. To be able to take them to a theater. And this is not just any theater, it's a luxury theater. So this is the one where the seats kick up and they come and they serve you. And you don't have to go out, wait in line if you don't wanna wait in line. Yeah, you're gonna pay for it. Yeah, you're right, you're gonna pay for it. But you don't have to get up and do all that running around. I missed half the movie because of my kids and one popcorn. I'll be able to sit there, order what we're gonna have and enjoy that. And that's a big deal for you and your extended family to be able to come and take advantage of. These are just some images in the back of what that's gonna look like. The courtyard is amazing. If you're interested in going up and walking into the retail area, just call my office. Three one oh, four one two, five six seven two. Three one oh, four one two, five six seven two. And we'll coordinate their, their leadership team over at Hollywood Park so you can go over there and take a, take a tour of, of what's happening there. It is absolutely beautiful. You're gonna be really impressed. Do, you want me to do it? All right, next thing. Also in Hollywood Park, have you guys seen those new apartments that are over there in Hollywood Park, right? You know what I mean? I know y'all just lining up to get in those apartments. I know you are. Right, well, there's two phases. First phase is called Wesley. This is three hundred and fourteen units. A hundred, the first hundred and one are up, open and accessible. You can go tour. You can walk over in there and they will show you the facility, show you what the amenities are. There's not a charge for you to go do that. Just walk, just park your car, walk over and you can go in and see. I've given you a couple of images of what that looks like. But this, this is, this is a, a major step in, in, in addressing housing just across the, across the board. This is not cheap housing. Y'all go on the line and you can see the numbers. It's, it's, it's above my pay grade, let me just put it that way. It's not, it, it, it's not meant to be. It's meant to be high-end luxury housing. It's meant to service the Hollywood Park area. It's meant to complement all the things that are going on in and around that particular area. And then once it's up, it's the first three hundred and fourteen, uh, units out of up to almost twenty-five-hundred. So just to let you know, some good things in there. But I like going in there to get good ideas on if I wanna redo this and do that. So it's a cool place to be able to go and take a look at it too. So it has all the amenities. I think they're going like three to six, three thousand to six thousand, um, a month. Yeah. All you big-time investors, I see you, I know. I see. All right, now, this is what I was talking about before, Cosm, Cosm. Cosm is, this is, this is some, we, we have SoFi, then we got Intuit, then we got YouTube Theater, and now we have Cosm gonna be in the middle. I didn't even wanna get to Hollywood Park Studios or talk to you about the hotel stuff. I'll save that for the next one. But man, the stuff that's happening there. This is a, a venue that is unlike any other venue that you, you ever have seen. The closest you're probably gonna get to it is, anybody been to Las Vegas before? There's this thing called a Sphere. Uh, this is about as close as you're gonna get. It is a huge screen, it is like being in the middle, it's IMAX on steroids. And it is, it is gonna be designed for you to be able to really enjoy, uh, events and concerts and immersive art and music and more. There's gonna be a lot of collaborations that go on there. So you're gonna have all this right in your backyard to be able to take advantage of. And, and to be able to experience. And for those of you who live in and around the area, it's walkable. You'll be able to walk onto the site. I ride my bike through Hollywood Park and other places. But you'll be able to actually just go and experience it. And this is gonna be one of the venues that you're gonna be amazingly proud of. There's nothing like this else in the world at this point, so. Uh, you guys know what this looks like? Y'all see that? Extra storage? Y'all like extra storage, huh? I see some extra storage fans out there. Some of y'all been having extra storage for a long time. You got two garages, a couple of rooms full of storage. This is extra storage. We've looked at this for how long? I mean, I've been talking about this stuff since Councilman Franklin was here. You know, what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? We finally, because of all the activity, because of all the energy, because of all the effort, we finally are getting these storage facility folks to step up. And so I wanna, I wanted to show you what it's gonna look like next. That's what it's gonna be transformed into. So you're talking about now, it's gonna be in a sand. Looks, it, it reminds you a lot about how the office buildings, uh, look. That's, it's not supposed to look like a storage facility. The landscaping on there is gonna be lush, it's gonna be, it's next to your- Cork and batter. Um, it's gonna have a roof deck access. It's gonna be an amazing building to complement what's going on there. Now, I wanna, I wish I could go backwards, but I don't wanna do it. Before and after. So what you're seeing is a transformation from what was to what is going to be. And so they're gonna be starting construction on that sometime next year. Uh, and, and so you're gonna see not only Intuit Dome come into play, but then you're gonna see all the other activities that's going on as well. All right, so what else do we have going? Finally, we got a lot of stuff happening. We're doing a street vending ordinance in the Hopper. We're gonna regulate and put barriers around for street vending. You guys, has anybody, when you go to other venues, you notice that street vendors just kinda come with the territory. But pay attention to what we're doing from a legislative standpoint. We're putting standards together so that we can try and minimize it, try and contain it, try and reduce it, try and keep it away from the residential neighborhoods and keep it clean and clear. Uh, we have a housing element that's nearing approval by the state. Uh, we have a new restrictive fast food regulation, the Hopper commissioners love that. We're gonna actually put some separations between fast food, drive-through restaurants and those type of things to reduce the proliferation of fast food within our community. We have online permitting that's being expanded. So now as you're beginning to make changes to your houses and the businesses that you do, you'll be able to go online and be able to submit those applications instead of coming down to City Hall and waiting in line. And that will make it more productive. When you come in, we'll be able to actually talk about things to get you moving down the line as opposed to just applications and all the things that take up so much time. We have new solar online permitting. You guys, solar is big. So a lot of stuff going on, a lot of money out there. I'm sure you're seeing all the social media over that. We're gonna be doing online permitting for that to make it simple and streamlined when you wanna do your Tesla packs and do all the solar stuff on your roof. You'll be able to do that easier. And then there's also more projects, more development projects. I could spend two hours talking about what's going on in the city. But it's all happening to help by your support, by the leadership of the council, the mayor and the council. Your councilwoman is doing, let me tell you, she calls me all the time. All the time. Talking about issues that are going on in your district. So I want to let you know you have a, you have a real leader that, that is reminiscent of what you've had in the past and will continue to have in the future. So I wanna thank Councilwoman Falk, and I'm gonna turn the mic over to her.
Okay, I know this fabulous economic manager, director, uh, has to go. He has another meeting. But we're gonna take one question, um, from the mic over here from our resident before you go, Chris.
Yeah. I gotta cut the mic on again. I think it turns out.
Okay, my name is Angelique Johnson and I live in the Century Heights District of the Fourth District. And, um, what I, my main concern is the code enforcement here in the city of Los Angeles. It is, I mean, uh, Inglewood, it is terrible. They, they're selling hot dogs, they're selling liquor on the premises that you have a sign that says that you cannot do it. So they do it anyway. So you've given them the power that they can do it, so here they are. Until somebody drinks too much beer and has a car accident, then we'll want to do something about it. My second thing is the cleanliness of the city of Inglewood. I walk five miles every day through this city. And I pick different parts of the city to walk around. The area around the SoFi area is absolutely filthy. The trash cans, those silver trash cans that say that they're for Inglewood, California, look atrocious. They are terrible. I've asked the people who are out there who cleaning them, I've asked them to come. The, uh, the, uh, the benches, uh, for the buses, and maybe the bus people have that. But the litter here, and especially after a game or an event here, they throw trash. I mean, the city of Los Angeles, they have these guys who walk around in these push carts. And they have brooms, they have cleanser, they have everything. That is an economic job that you could actually be giving somebody here in the city to help take care and clean up this city. You know, the mayor is always bragging about the SoFi this and the whoop-whoop that. And it is terrible. So I need more code enforcement piece.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So, um, before I turn it over to our director, Chris Jackson, I do wanna say that, uh, we've had, uh, made significant strides to make sure that there's a cleanup effort around SoFi Stadium. We have put trash cans at almost like every intersection, every block, all around there. And then we make a, uh, effort to get to those trash cans and clean them out. Also, um, after recently, this was probably about six months ago now, uh, we did notice, uh, around the venue also that after an event, there would be trash that would be left behind by people who were in attendance. And so, um, now our, um, Public Works Department comes out. And after the event, they clean up the trash. And it's, and we've received a lot of, um, compliments, especially near Renaissance, the gated communities, because they come right through Pinque. So there has been a lot of, um, a lot of effort to make sure that those, those corridors are clean. So, um, thank you so much for, for realizing that. Because that was, um, one of the issues. There's been several issues that come out. There's, you know, this is not a perfect city. And so we have new, uh, economic development that comes in, that's coming in. But with that comes growing pains. So we are, as they come up, then we are acknowledging them. We're, we're figuring out the best way to combat them. And we're taking those issues head-on. And if you watch the city council meeting, we also give updates about what's happening and how we're trying to combat those issues. So thank you so much for bringing that up. And I don't know if you had something else you wanna add?
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah. Well, let, let me respond to the code, code enforcement issue and then, and then-
Go ahead.
So, so, street vending is a difficult issue. It's a state issue. It's, it's so difficult that the state decriminalize street vending. And what that basically means is the only mechanisms we have to address it are administrative. Which is one of the reasons why I brought up the fact that we're introducing some new standards in the city to be able to deal with that. So that we can have more confiscation to deal with some of the issues that are going on there. But this is a, this is one of those issues that is not a local issue. It happens at every venue, um, that I've been to. You know, I don't know about, you know, some folks have seen perfect venues, I haven't. I, and I've been to a lot of them. So I, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing. But what I'm saying is that we are doing everything in our power. It is a large number of individuals who are coming in to do this. And we're working in partnership with, uh, SoFi to address those particular issues, so.
Thank you. Real quick, we have questions. Yes, uh-huh.
Praise to God, I'm, I'm Pastor Johnny Blakely. I've been a resident of Inglewood for over thirty years. I was the former, uh, block captain of Vanwood Block Club. I wanna thank you for the swift movements you made on the tree that I've been trying to get moved in front of my house for, for years. Swift action, I call you off at one time.
I'm happy to help all the time. You're welcome.
Uh, but I wanna ask the question about shredding. We used to, we had shredding was going on in the city. You used to have it every once in a while. And you used to go to, to La Brea, I think it's La Brea and Queen on the corner. You could take it up there and get your things shredded. And they used to have this, annually, they used to have this. But now, the only way you can get things shredded is you gotta go somewhere and, and pay money or at different places to get things shredded. Everybody has not went into the computer and version of all that area. But I was just wondering if you could, could address that and continue some way of, or, or somewhere we can get things shredded.
Yeah, and, and we have shredding events going on across the city all the time, by the way. We need to make sure you're talking with the councilwoman, 'cause she'll lead you there. There's always a shredding event going on. So if you, if you have any issues and stuff, we certainly can work with Republic, which is our waste hauler contract, does those shredding. Uh, our director and, and Assistant City Manager, Louis Atwell, will share a little bit of information about that, uh, in terms of availability. But there is, reach out to the councilwoman, she'll tell you exactly where they are. They're always going on. So thank you, everybody.
Can you please give Chris Jackson, our economic director, a round of applause? Thank you so much, Chris, appreciate you. He's headed off to his next, his next meeting. And, uh, sir, yes, we will, we do have shredding events. So what I will do is, um, maybe what we can do is make sure we get your number so that you can be, um, on-site for the next shredding event. We do have them regularly in the city. And so we wanna make sure everybody is aware and bring out their paper. Because I know that, um, that is something that is requested all the time. And so I actually was gonna reach out to Republic and see if we can do even more shredding events or extend them. So I will be working on that. Please stay connected with my office. And you will definitely be up to speed and get that information on our shredding events, okay? You're welcome, sir. You're welcome. Okay, I'm gonna ask our Inglewood Unified School District President, our county administrator to come on up. He is going to give a couple of updates on what's happening with Inglewood Unified School District. This is for District 4's knowledge, and because I get a lot of questions, my office, about what's happening with Inglewood Unified School District, you know, is the school closing? Where are the kids gonna go? And so I just know that it's very important, even if you don't have kids in the district, it's very important for you to know and have information about what's happening with our school district. So I asked him to come and give some brief updates so that you all know for yourselves, and you can get any questions answered. And so I'm gonna ask him to come forward, and really quick before I do, I do wanna acknowledge my wonderful husband, Shannon Falk, and my two sons, Fitzgerald and Sebastian. They always come out and support. They're quietly in the corner, they always help and assist. Please give them a round of applause. I love you guys so much. Thank you for supporting mommy. And so with that said, come on up, Dr. Morris. I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, council member. My name is Jim Morris. I'm the new county administrator for Inglewood Unified. This is actually, I'll, I'll give you a little bit of background information. My 43rd year as an educator, and my probably biggest claim to fame is, in 43 years, I'm the guy that has never taken a sick day. I have been blessed with good health, and in 43 years, I show up every day. I think Mayor Butts said a lot at the beginning when he said how important it is that we recognize, number one, the successes of our school district, and also the challenges that we face. And that's kind of what I'm gonna share with you today, is here's some history. I'm gonna begin by telling you my personal history with Inglewood Unified. Back in 1999, I was the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction in LA Unified. And at that time, Inglewood had 18,000 students. Every school had a waiting list. And I came over from LA Unified and stole folks from Inglewood right and left, because this was the district that knew how to teach kids how to read and math better than any other district in the state of California. 18,000 students, every school had a waiting list. You couldn't get your children into Inglewood schools at that time because they were so good. We're going back to those days in Inglewood Unified, and I'm gonna give you a brief update about receivership in the district, 'cause lots of folks ask me, what does that mean? I think many of you folks in the community know, about 11 years ago, the district had some very, very serious financial problems, had to take out a loan from the state, and because of that, the district went into receivership. And everybody asks me, how do you get out of receivership? And how are you, Jim Morris, gonna help make that happen quickly? And so I'm gonna share a little bit of data with you. In order for the district to get out of receivership, the state has an audit team that comes and looks at the district every single year. And there are 155 standards that the district has to meet. And this is kind of the report card for the district. The orange dots on the left kinda show you where the district was back in 2013, when they got their first report card. The blue dots to the right kinda give you the last two years and show you where the district is. Now, in order to get out of receivership, the district has to get, on a scale of 1 to 10, a minimum score of four in each of these areas: community relations and governance, personnel management, pupil achievement, fiscal management, and facilities management. So you can see, the district has made some good progress. I'm gonna go on to the next slide. Oh, thank you so much. The, the next slide, whoops, kinda shows you, of those 155 standards, the district has met the mark on all except for 36. So I keep trying to tell the Board of Education, hey, I got 36 accountabilities I have to meet, because our job is to get back to local control. There's eight in facilities management, there's 16 in financial management, one in personnel management, and 11 in pupil achievement. That's what we have to work on, meeting those standards. And let me just give you an example, 'cause you may say, well, what standards are you talking about? Well, I show you on this chart, in the area of personnel management, for example, one standard that the district hasn't met. What is that? Just says, we have to evaluate 100% of employees every year. Now, for the last 11 years, we've missed the mark on doing that. I promise you, this year, we're gonna make it, because it's a simple thing to do. These are standards, this is just good business practice. And so we have to really, really focus on what those standards are. The good news is, I really believe that the district, as Mayor Butts said, you know, the renaissance of the city of Inglewood, the district is on the cusp of doing that. We're gonna implement, just like the district did back in the late 1990s and early 2000s, a common reading program, like open court reading. That was a key to success, right? How did the district get those achievement scores? Taught all the kids how to read. We had a good reading program in place. We're returning to that same system next year. The next thing I have to share with you is just some data on school capacity. Thank you so much. School capacity, because one of the big issues is, we started out with an enrollment of 18,000. Our enrollment today is less than 8,000. But we still have almost the same number of schools open. And you see, we've lost more than half of our enrollment. This chart kinda shows you, school by school, what the current enrollment capacity is. How many children could we accommodate at that school? And then, what is the current enrollment? How many seats are available? And what the available capacity is? And essentially, the, now therefore, when you look at that last column, tells you, almost every school in the district has more than half of the seats empty. And that just tells me, I'm operating more schools than we can afford to operate. That's part of getting the fiscal house in order. And I know folks don't like it when you have to close down schools, but the truth of the matter is, the numbers tell the story right there. I'm paying principals, I'm paying gas bills, electric bills, water bills, for facilities that are sitting half-empty. I cannot continue to operate the same number of schools with the number of students we have. Now, the other important thing is, I've met with the economic development folks in the city. We're not gonna get that many more students because of the kind of five-to-10-year projection of the housing that will be built in, in Inglewood. So we really have to deal with this issue. Folks, as, as the mayor said in the opening, sometimes you have to make those decisions that are unpopular, but it is something that we have to, to deal with. The last slide, I'll, I'll just very quickly, and I promised Councilmember Falk I would be no more than five minutes, is just some data on immediate repairs of our facilities. If anybody in this room has gone to look at any of our schools, Inglewood High School is a good example, our children deserve better facilities than we have for them right now. This shows you that there's about immediate needs in the district. Immediate, which is, it has to be done, about $113 million worth of repairs. And I'm not talking about fancy stuff. You know that Morningside High School had to close down for the whole month of January because of the gas line ruptured, and we couldn't heat the school. And it was a major half-a-million-dollar project to get that gas line repaired throughout every corridor of that school. And so I, I bring this kind of harsh reality to say, the bond money that this community has generously given to the district, we have about $240 million that you voted to say, fix the schools. We have a plan to fix Inglewood High School, for example, but that's gonna take about $170 million just to fix that one school. So we have a lot of work to do. We are gonna get it done. I come to work every day full of energy, enthusiasm, and hope, because I have the best job in the world. I have 7,600 bosses, and they are your children and grandchildren, and that's who I'm gonna come and work for every day. Thank you, Councilmember Falk.
Thank you so much, Dr. Morris. I wanted to see, do we have any questions at all? Do you mind going to the microphone real quick?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. So you're, you're correct, COVID did affect enrollment, but there is no longer an option for parents to have an online option from home. So yes, those children have had to come back to in-person instruction. We have in the district about 70 students right now who are being homeschooled by a combination of their parent and a teacher who sees them, but that number's down to about 70 students right now.
Hi, my name is Mrs. Lot. I wanna know what happened to the repairs that was supposed to have been done to Inglewood High School and Morningside in 2008?
So...
I had, I had, I had grandkids doing it, and the big old signs were there, another Inglewood project coming. It never happened.
Yeah.
This is why our schools are in such disarray.
Yeah. I, I, I can tell you, I can tell you what happened. You know, I, I began in this position on January 23rd. I've met with our facilities team today. I've gone over the plan for Inglewood High School, and we are putting it out to bid. We've hired an architect, and now we have to bid for a contractor to do the work. Inglewood High School is a great example of a, a school that has a lot of potential. But when we do the facilities analysis of it, everybody who looks at it says, you know what? You know, the, the state of California gives guidelines. If you're gonna repair a building, if you're gonna spend more than 50% of the cost to repair the building than it would be to tear it down and build new, you have to tear it down and build new. And in the case of Inglewood High School, we're gonna have to, to tear down much of what's there and start new construction. But the nice thing is, it's 100 years old. We'll have a school that'll last for the next 100 years. You're gonna see that project get fast-tracked. There are a couple of other projects in the district, exciting projects, that you're gonna see fast-tracked and work beginning very soon. A lot of work was done at Morningside. Right now, you'll see if you, because you live in this community, for example, over the summer, we're gonna finally demolish the old Woodworth site, because that is, it's, it's an embarrassment to me as the county administrator, because, you know, I'm constantly driving by there telling our folks, hey, there's tagging up there again. I drove to the back of the site the other day and had to take some unhoused folks and ask them to leave the property, myself, 'cause I said, I come upon this situation, I'm old and I'm tough, and I'm gonna, you know, just deal with it. But the, you're, you're gonna see some progress.
I hope so, because we waited for so long. And, you know, it's, it's an embarrassment that when the school should've been taken care of, they weren't. That's the embarrassing part.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We have another question.
Well, good evening. My name is Melvin Howard, and I want to know, are you all going to put schools over by these fancy apartments that they're putting up? Are you gonna put a new school over there for those children that will be going, living there? Are, are you going to really work on getting the schools that we have already in condition to be used and, and for educating our children? All of them, all colors, all, everything? Now, are you?
So, yes, yes, ma'am, absolutely yes to fixing the schools we have. So I, I wanna address, and I thank you, I appreciate your question. For the new housing developments, you know, we, we do an analysis called a student generation rate. When you're building single, one- and two-bedroom apartments that rent, starting at, you know, $3,500 a month, we're not gonna get children out of that development. We, we don't need a school in that development, because the folks...
You, you mean to tell me that you think because they're just single, one-bedroom apartments or whatever, that there won't be children there? They won't make any babies? Come on now! Come on!
Yeah. Yeah. We, we, we do have the, the data to back it up. Yes, there will be some children there, but there's not enough children that come from a development like that to show a need. We have schools, for example, Kelso Elementary, which is right across the street from the Forum, is another example of a school that we have to do significant improvements on. Kelso Elementary is a school that, it, it's an old building. It, overall, if you look, it's needs to really fix that school up and make it a world-class school again, it's probably gonna cost about $40 million. Students who live in that development can walk across the street to Kelso, if you're looking at Hollywood Park. It's right there.
What, were you looking at a school...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am. We have a couple other questions. I'm sorry. I wanna make sure everybody gets an opportunity. We're, we're, okay, come on. Next question, please.
Dr. Morris, my name is Lori, and my niece, Melody Olmer, has donated to Morningside High School regarding their athletic department. And it's been over a year, and she's been dealing with, they haven't done anything. So what is the status going on? Because she, she is an alumnus from Morningside, and she personally came out of her pocket, wrote a check, in fact, they haven't even cashed the check. And she's been going, yes, I have, yes, I just confirmed that with my niece. So, and she donated over a year ago, and they haven't done anything.
Yeah.
Are you aware, or, I, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I'm gonna put you on the spot. So, is, are you aware of, of this donation, and what has been, anything has come, have you, has anyone brought that to your attention? Let me just ask you that.
No, ma'am, but I, we're gonna have a conversation right when I leave this podium, and we're gonna follow up on it. I, I do have to, you know, Morningside is, is challenged, because when you really look, we have a school that was built originally for about 2,000 students, and there are currently about 450 students at Morningside. We look at the pattern of drop in enrollment, and we're losing an enrollment of about 40 students a year. So it, it is a challenge, but when somebody comes to us with a donation, the first thing we need to say is thank you. And then, when, the second thing we need to do is make sure we use that donation as intended. So I apologize, I apologize to your family, and I will follow up, because you're, I, I, you're not gonna let me out of this room?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. Trust me, I'm not. I, I am a former business ethics conduct officer, so I will stay on you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next question. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Good evening, Dr. James. I'm Monique Bacon. I'm a District 4 resident who has adult children and plan on having grandchildren. And so my concern is the, the system itself in terms of education, 'cause I believe if we address the systemic issues, we can bring our kids back to Inglewood Unified. But my question is, I'm hearing what you're saying, and I've attended other meetings regarding the different schools and facilities. Have you all decided on which schools are actually going to close? And if so, are they closing now, and in 2024 will not be reopened, or what's the status of that? Also, and the second thing is, I would love to see a town hall specifically addressed to the education system in Inglewood, so we can go ahead and work on that and fix it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. You know, there, there really is nothing that people care about more than their children and grandchildren, and that, and that is why I think our job is so important to the development of the city. The specific question, though, is, so we, I, you know, my, about fifth week on the job, I had to make a decision on the closure, and that was the closure of Worthington. Worthington Elementary will close next December, and we did it over the winter break to make it as sensitive to children as we could. So what will happen in December, during the winter break? All of the furniture, all of the, the teachers' materials, everything will move over to Woodworth Monroe. The teachers will, when they come back, the students, when they come back from winter break, will go over to Woodworth Monroe with their same teachers, with their same classmates. We did it in the middle of the year like that, because we heard a lot of concern. Children are concerned, they don't wanna lose their friend group, they love their teachers. And so in order to make the transition easier, we made a decision to do it... And so, in order to make the transition easier, we made a decision to do it in the middle of the year. Beyond that, we have a community committee, and I will make sure that Councilmember Falk has the information to put in her website, any community members who are interested in serving. That's a school consolidation and closure committee that will be making some recommendations on the next group of school closures. With that, I thank you so, so much. It's an honor to be here and to serve the community.
Thank you so much for coming. Please give him a round of applause. Thank you so much, Dr. Morris. And then also, I want to acknowledge Sabrina Miller, if you could stand up and be acknowledged. She works with Inglewood Unified School District. She is a community liaison. Please give her a round of applause. Thank you so much, Sabrina, for all that you do. And with that, I'm going to ask our, Sean, you know, I'm going to mess up your last name. Inaway, okay, Sean Inaway, to come up and give a brief update on what's happening with District Four with the Red Cross. We had a big Red Cross event. Did anybody in here participate in the Red Cross event? Oh, okay, well, now you're going to know something about it, and there's another opportunity. We did have a lot of homes that participated, but there's another opportunity. So, Sean, please come on up. Thank you so much for being here, appreciate you.
Well, thanks, y'all. My name is Sean, I'm with the American Red Cross, and I want to thank the councilwoman and the city leadership for really leaning into the Red Cross partnership and making sure, really, that we're here serving you. And last, but definitely not least, I want to recognize all of you for showing up. It is refreshing to see an engaged, compassionate, and I should say, passionate, community showing up for their community. So, a quick round of applause for all of you for being here tonight. Thank you. Now, a quick show of hands, how many people saw this on their way in? Did anybody grab one of these already? A couple of you, a couple of hands? Please, make sure you grab one before your way out. So, the Red Cross, we focus on five, five main lines of service. Does anybody know what they are, real quick? Shout them out, if you know. Blood, I heard blood? Fires, so disasters? Those are the top two people think about. I'll quickly touch on the other three before I move on to the stuff that we've been doing here in CD4. Services the Armed Forces, so we serve our veterans, we serve our active military families. We do a lot of youth preparedness, so we'll be working with a lot with IUSD on making sure folks are prepared, both at school and at home. And we do a ton of work with international humanitarian relief. So, the things that you see going on, like, it's not international, but the big typhoon that's going on in Guam right now, we're deploying a ton of volunteers out of Los Angeles. And those volunteers, they're all you, they're community members who raise their hands to serve. So, thank you. Recently, we did some great stuff here at the end of April, actually right out of Morningside High School. Does anybody know the number one disaster the Red Cross responds to here in the United States and here in Los Angeles? Fires, right? Anybody know what kind of fires? Home fires. Every single night in Los Angeles County, the Red Cross responds to an average of two to three homes that have burned down, and people have lost everything. This is not what you see in the news every night. But that is what folks like you, raise your hands, to go out and respond to, to make sure folks have that direct financial assistance, they have a compassionate volunteer from the Red Cross in their community stewarding them through their recovery. And we want to make sure that we're not only continuing to do that for those residents, we want to make sure folks are prepared. The number one reason why people pass away in home fires? Anybody know what it is? Smoke alarms aren't working. That's it. And that is a big part, or that was the main focus of what we did at our Sound the Alarm at the end of April. So, we gathered at Morningside High School, we had, what, hundreds of volunteers, hundreds of volunteers come out to literally just go door-to-door and install free smoke alarms. We do that throughout the year. The big campaign that we do is in the spring, but we want to make sure people know that we continue to do this throughout the year. So, Councilwoman Falk and our office are working together, identify a few more dates in some of the neighborhoods that we've seen more home fires. Has anybody had a home fire in their neighborhood recently in CD4, in the last six months? Couple? Not too many? Hopefully, it's because y'all have working smoke alarms, and you've seen what's in this packet. So, I'm going to go through this really quickly, and I'm going to give you two calls to action. The first one is just to grab one of these packets. How many folks have a disaster plan at home? Raise your hands and raise them proud. There's not many of us. I work at the Red Cross, it took me six years to make one. We don't think about it every single day. That's why programs like this are, they're paramount, right? So, inside this packet, there's four forms. One of them is on earthquake safety, one of them's on making a plan with your family in case there's a home fire, one of them talks about the documents that you need, and inside here, they're both English and Spanish, and on the outside, you see that says, "Emergency Documents." That's exactly what's supposed to go in here. This goes in your freezer. So, this is my second call to action. When you go home tonight, or first thing in the morning, open this packet at your dinner table, at your breakfast table. Talk to your family members about, hey, do we have smoke alarms? Are they working? When's the last time we tested them? Do we have a plan? If there's a fire in the living room, do we have a way to get out of the house? These are all really important things to talk about beforehand, and we just don't. Until there's a home fire in our neighborhood, until we see something on the news, until there's that big earthquake, and it's too late. So, that's a really important piece of, we're really grateful, Councilwoman, for the Councilman's office and for the city leadership in making sure that folks have this information. It is free. We have so many things going on in our daily lives that we need more folks to raise their hands, to become prepared, make sure their neighbors know how to be prepared, and make sure they know the Red Cross is there for them if something does happen. Does that make sense? It's a lot of information. Two calls to action. Grab one of these packets and talk about what's inside of it, what's inside of it with your families, okay? And of course, the Red Cross, I want to thank the lieutenant for being so bold to give his cell phone number out, I'm going to do the same thing. If the Red Cross is not somewhere you feel like we should be, it's a school, it's a church, it's a community event, Councilwoman Falk's office does a great job of sending those our way, call me. My name is Sean Inaway, I'm the executive director for our chapter that covers western Los Angeles. My number is 310-429-1025. I will leave a stack of my cards next to the rest of these packets at the tables on the way in. But does anybody have any questions for me? And please, like the lieutenant mentioned, if I don't pick up right away, text me or leave me a voicemail, I'll be sure to get back to you as soon as possible. So, for Sound the Alarm. So, once we pick a date, we're going to blast that out through all of our channels, right? So, we'll make sure that gets on the email list, it goes out in the newsletters, we'll make sure that we put that on all of our socials, on those incredible billboards y'all have, the WOW billboards, right? We'll put those up there. And there's two things that you can sign up for at that. One, you can sign up to get a smoke alarm, install for free, we'll come and go through this packet with you. And the other piece is actually going door-to-door and installing these fire alarms and smoke alarms. Let me tell you, I met some incredible residents in CD4. On One-Tenth, there was a woman who was doing a, she's got a bakery in her backyard, so the mayor comes here for his cakes. So, I now know, now have a new place to go. And I'm just north of y'all, I'm in LaMert Park, but you're making a strong case for me to make a few hops south. So, thank you for your compassion, and really for your commitment to the community here. Does anybody have any questions? Beautiful.
All right, we want District Four to be safe, so I asked Sean to come out, give a presentation. I will make sure that everybody is aware when we have the next Sound the Alarm event. It's a free service, you get a free installation, there's no reason to not take advantage of it. So, let's make sure we make our homes safe, okay? So, look for that information, it is coming. Next up, I'm going to ask our Public Works Director, Louis Atwell, to come on up and give a few updates on what's happening in District Four with our capital improvements project. Thank you so much. I was looking for you, I was like, where did it go?
Yeah, I know, I don't look at my picture anymore.
I know, thank you. All right, please give him a round of applause.
It's good to be here tonight. Great speakers, by the way. I don't know if I can match how great these speakers are. And Councilwoman, your family is so wonderful, your two boys are so good. My daughter could never sit like that for that long. So, the Public Works Department, real quick, is, we're responsible for essentially everything in the public right-of-way. So, our streets, our sidewalks, our water, our sewer, our fleet services, we take care of all the police cars and all the equipment that we use in the field. We also maintain all the city buildings, so our park buildings, our City Hall, just the various buildings. And we also have a mapping division as well, so we put together maps of the city. They may include the districts, they may include locations of where the schools are. Even FEMA contacts us for if there's any flood data map information. And we're also responsible for permitting within the public right-of-way. So, when the gas company or Edison wants to put a line in the street, they come to the Public Works Department, they pull a permit, and we make sure that their traffic control is set up properly. So, the core services, I got to put my glasses on, let me see if I can find them. So, the Public Works Department's core services include design, construct, inspect, and maintain the city's infrastructure. We maintain the city buildings, as I just explained, we issue the permits, and we manage the solid waste. So, we talked about shredding earlier, and I'm going to give you a couple phone numbers that you can contact if you want shredding or you need anything regarding Public Works. Public Works Department number is 310-412-5333. And we also maintain and repair the city's fleet. So, as far as capital improvement projects, the Public Works Department's responsible for that. And within the last year or so, we've improved about half a million square feet of pavement. And to put that in perspective, it's about eight linear miles of street. And a linear mile or a linear width of street is about 12 feet. And we improved about 5,000 square feet of sidewalk, and we removed and constructed 20 ADA accessibility pedestrian ramps. And that project ended in March of 2022. The streets that we improved are the Imperial Frontage Road from Spinning Avenue to Artith, Yukon Avenue from Century Boulevard to Imperial Highway, Cherry Avenue from 118th Place to Imperial Highway, Den Avenue from 118th to Imperial Highway, 104th from Crenshaw to 110th, 116th from Imperial Highway to Lamoli, Sims Avenue from Imperial Highway to the south end of the city, 116th Street from Crenshaw Boulevard to Sims Avenue, 118th Place from Den to Crenshaw Boulevard. So, that's quite a few streets. However, we have even more streets coming up, and we should start those within September, October timeframe. So, we have plenty more streets to do. And these are primarily residential streets and our alleys. And this is just, this is just a picture of what we do is, we'll do a grind, a two-inch grind on the pavement, we'll remove the old pavement, and then we'll lay a fresh two-inch pavement right over it. And that street should last another 10 to 15 years. Another project that we did just recently was the Crenshaw Library Parking Lot, and we resurfaced and we replaced the sidewalk curb and gutter in that area as well, added some Americans with Disabilities Act ADA walkway, and that construction completed about May of 2021. So, proposed projects, we're keeping very, very busy. Crenshaw Boulevard is one of our last major corridors that we need to improve. We've already hit Imperial, we hit Prairie, we hit Manchester about 10, 12 years ago, and we also did Century Boulevard. Crenshaw is our next street. It's currently under design, it's nearing final design, and we plan on essentially doing everything we did to Century as far as redeveloping the pavement, the sidewalks, and even the landscaping in that area. So, we're really going to improve it. It's about a $40 million project, hopefully it stays within that budget, because as everybody knows, inflation continues to increase, everybody fills it in their pocketbook, and we also fill it in construction as well. We're looking at a 2026 start line, essentially, to, actually to complete the project. And here's just a quick little, essentially, you know, diagram or a picture of what we plan on doing. And this project is actually all the way from the 105 exit all the way up to the north part of the city. In addition to just doing the pavement, we also put in fiber optics in the ground, we put in camera systems to detect traffic, and we also can remotely control our traffic signals from City Hall and also from SoFi Stadium. So, we are able to control the traffic signals, if we see that traffic is building up in a certain area, we can make changes on the fly. So, with that phone number I gave you, the 412-5333 number, if you see a traffic signal that's not operating correctly, or maybe it's taking too much time to change, let us know, and we'll do our best to take a look at it, investigate it, and make changes where necessary. Sure, it's 310-412-5333. Louis Atwell. And again, like I talked about earlier, all the streets that I mentioned that were completed last year, we're actually going to do even more this year. Again, it's under the Proposed Street and Alley Improvement Project, and we're looking at proposing to council a million dollars, maybe $2 million, we don't know yet, but with the councilwoman's help, it may be more than that, who knows? Because as everybody has mentioned up here, she calls us quite a bit. Now, this is a wonderful project that really came out of nowhere, thanks to the councilwoman. We pushed this project, she pushed it, and it's the Darby-Dixon parking lots. If anybody lives in the Darby-Dixon area just south of Century, there are two, there's actually a current parking lot there that needs restriping and ADA improvements, and then there's a field adjacent, not adjacent to, but just down the street from it, that is an empty lot, and it's sat that way for who knows how many years, probably 15, 20 years. It looks like a very long time. Well, thanks to the councilwoman, we're going to improve it. Essentially, that's what the lot looks like, it's just, has weeds on it, some grass, and there's a couple cars that park on it every once in a while. And we're going to improve it, the two, we'll have 32 spaces for that area of much-needed parking, and that's essentially what the new parking lot's going to look like. And then we also have some water, everybody cares about the streets, but when they turn their tap on, water comes out, and we do have some water main projects in the area as well. Once they get buried, people essentially forget about them until they blow up, and the next thing you know, you can't turn your tap on. But we're constantly improving our water system as well. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions?
So, do you have any control over, like, bike lanes or anything like that on, for our streets?
Yes.
Okay, because we desperately need them. I would like to see bike lanes on Imperial and not Century, but Manchester. The, I ran a campaign here, and I rode my bike, and it was the most dangerous thing ever to ride a bike here in Inglewood. I'm going to tell you, the only bike, there's a bike lane that goes into SoFi Stadium, believe it or not. That's a bike lane, there's a bike lane on Eucalyptus and Lotus around in that area, but we need more designated areas for bikes. We need bike lanes. And when you, so number one is bike lanes, and I'm going to let them go ahead, I'm going-
While you look that up, I totally agree. I'm a cyclist myself, and we can't put bike lanes wherever we want them, but we should put them in areas where they make sense, because you're right, some of the streets are very, very dangerous, they're heavily congested, and, yeah, it can be, it can be very dangerous in some areas. But I agree, there are streets that deserve bike lanes.
And I'm going to give you guys this one for free. So, when you have, because you're talking about that the lights and stuff can be directed, and they can see the traffic to change the lights, well, whoever is doing it is sleep at the wheel. And I'm going to tell you why. Because I've come from Raider games, I've come from Charger games, I have come from concerts, and the biggest artery that really fails going down Century is that you- And the biggest artery that really fails going down Century is that you have that right lane that can only turn right. And it only turns right to nowhere. Because there's a fence there, you can't even turn right. So to make the traffic flow, make those four lanes, make that, this last lane that's right here, make it a decision lane that you can go straight if you want, or you can turn if you want. Because when the traffic is, see, this is my problem with the Inglewood City Council and the Inglewood government in general, is that you guys are not out there, you're not seeing what happens to us. You may live here, but you're not being affected by what's going on here like we are on a daily basis. So like I said, that, I'm gonna give you that one free, but we need to open up that right lane.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I will tell you this, what, what is the number again? For, for the...
It's 310-412-5333. And I have one other, I have one other number. You can also call the Parking and Traffic Division at 310-412-8732 for traffic and parking questions as well.
Thank you. So what I'm trying to do is if, if you see something, say something. So thank you so much. That's why we're having these town halls. You bring your issues here, let us know what's happening, and let's work together to get it resolved, right? Am I right? Okay, that's all we can do, right? Okay, let's go to the next question.
Hi. My name is Ms. Emma Lathrin, 58-year resident of Inglewood this month. Hey. I'm concerned about our streets. I live in the avenues. And I have nightmares about the streets caving in. When I look across Crenshaw, I think it's the second district, they are paving those streets. Those streets have not been dealt with in 58 years. So now we about to cave in over there. You're beautifying your home, and you walk out, you're ashamed to have people come over there because everybody asks questions. What's going on here? So we need you to look into that. Another thing I have to say, I don't know whether you have anything to do with this or not, the trees. Now...
I do. I'm in trouble.
We are adults. And we are asking that anytime you're doing something like that, we need to be notified. I do not want a tree in front of my house. The tree that I had, two trees, they got two trees they want to put in front of my house. The last tree that I had fell on my husband's truck. And believe it or not, I had to sue the city of Inglewood to repair it. So I don't want to go through that anymore. So no, thank you for the trees. And I need you to look into avenues for repaving those streets. Thank you.
Oh, ma'am, ma'am. Do you mind giving us your address so we can look into the, the streets, the, the street?
The trees and the avenues.
I'm sorry? Seventh Avenue? Okay. Thank you so much for that, ma'am. Thank you. We're gonna go to our next question.
Good evening, Mr., oh, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mr. Atwell. I'm, I'm Monique Bacon, and I have a couple, just real quick. Number one, with reference to the trees, I had a tree cut down like a year and two weeks. And they left the stump, and I've been trying to get somebody to come out after a year and two weeks to get the stump removed. I'll give you my address. Second thing is, I tripped and fell on the city sidewalk in my neighborhood, hurt both my knees. I can go on, but we won't. And when I, when I inquired, it was like a two-year wait to get it fixed. I don't understand that. But I want to bring that to your attention, and I will give you my address because I want that addressed in my situation addressed as well. Number three, do you have anything to do with the colorful decorations on the street? The white paint, the yellow paint, the orange paint, the blue paint that's, you know, leading to the water and, what's happening with all those colors? And how long are they gonna be there? And when are they gonna get the work done? And let me see, what was the last one? I think that was it. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's a very...
And the light at Fifth and Century? Because I know about that little trick. I try to roll over, you know, to get the light to change. But Fifth Avenue and Century, if you can just kind of help that out, even if it's not a game day, thank you.
Okay. So regarding the paint, before we, we dig, we have to call, call before you dig. And what happens is you have the gas company, the electric company, you have all the different utilities come out, and then they paint the lines before we can actually do the construction. But if you notice it's been there for a very long time and nothing's happened, please call us and we can have it removed by the utility companies.
She says she'll call tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, sir.
Mr. Atwell, my name is Dwight Matthews. I'm on a different mission here. You named a lot of things that you're gonna have done in the city, improvements and all. Is this contracted jobs that are outside the city? Take, they come, they work, and they take the money away from Inglewood? Or are you providing jobs here in Inglewood and giving apprenticeships here in Inglewood for people who live in Inglewood, for the kids who live around here? Are you making sure that they can have a job for the next 10 to 15 years? Because after this goes, there's maintenance. So who's gonna work it? A contractor? A contractor company? Or did you give jobs? Or are you providing jobs?
Right. That, that's a great question. So for our big projects, our major projects, we do require local hire. We required SoFi Stadium, Intuit Dome, and then the ITC, which you're gonna hear about in about 10, maybe 15 minutes. On the smaller projects, we follow the state contract code, and we put those projects out for bid. And they come in for public bid. So that's how we do it. But for the major projects, we do local hire. And there's apprenticeships, and there's also training for local, local folks to do the work.
The apprenticeship is in Inglewood?
I'm not sure how they do it, but I, I do know that we, I think our goals are 15 to 30% local hire.
Even for felons?
Inglewood Unified School District, ma'am, actually does have an apprenticeship program that they launched. I think it's maybe been going for maybe close to two years now? So, oh, four years. So yes, so they work directly with the kids, and they do have an apprenticeship program. I'm gonna, thank you so much. Thank you. Next gentleman.
Good evening. It's me again. I just, this is an alert. There's a few people that's going around in the Inglewood. I don't know whether they're in your area, but they're on a scooter. They're going around testing the water. Don't let them in your house. I made a mistake and did it. He came in and tested my water and said it was poison. So the monster, really scared, he, he took the cold water, hot water, and ran another test and said it was poison. So I was really alarmed about it. So I called the, you know, Public, the Water District, and they said, we'd all been dead if that water had been poisoned. But be careful, be on the alert for them. They're young men, they ride around on those scooters. Whether they're in your area or not, don't talk to them.
The gentleman is, you're absolutely correct. Your water is actually safer than bottled water. It has to meet more stringent requirements. But there are people out there that go door to door, and they, they look for the numbers. One out of 50 people maybe let them in. And then what they do is they tell you that the water's poison, and then they sell you something. So I'm glad you didn't do any, you're right to call the Public Works Department and let us know. And then what we'll do is we'll contact either the police department or we'll investigate ourselves.
Thank you so much for making, for letting us know.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm concerned about the people that live borderline Inglewood area. We don't get the works we should get. We don't get the police department that we should get. And after all these rains, we got potholes in the alley. I called the city, the guy came out, he said he don't know when they're gonna do the alley. And I said, you know when you're gonna have me to pay the taxes here after 50 some odd years? So why can't we get service? And I have called the city and can't get nobody to say anything. And that's why I'm saying it now.
Can, can you give me the, the alley, the stretch of the alley?
Which, did she say which? What, I'm sorry, Dorothy, which, which alley is it? Where's it? Imperial? All right. Thank you so much for letting us know. And so we, that's what we're here for. I mean, we, if sometimes we don't know everything that's happening in the city. So it's very important to reach out to my office or to Public Works. Once we know, then we can schedule a repair for that, and we can get it repaired. So thank you so much. We're not musicians. We, we do have to work with you. You guys have to work with us. So if you see something, I, that's gonna be my motto. See something, say something, and we'll work together to get it done. Yes, yes, ma'am?
Do you have anything to do with the signal lights?
I do.
Okay, good. 111th Place in Crenshaw? You're gonna, somebody's gonna lose their life. Because for some reason, they think that you only go left or you only go right. When you're trying to go straight across, like when I'm trying to go home, it's a fight. You either have to stop because they're gonna turn. You're not, they think you're not supposed to go straight. So it's a problem, and it's gonna be a really bad accident there. Because you have a lot of nuts that's feeding also, and they just don't stop.
Yeah. Thank you so much for bringing that up. And it sounds like it truly is a problem. Because I'm hearing it from others. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Pastor Jay, you wanna go to the mic?
I suffered a really bad car accident at the corner of Yukon and Imperial, where the gas is, the ARCO. I'm requesting a left turn signal at that intersection. Because I, I see that that is a very busy intersection, and I've seen at least five or six accidents at that very intersection where cars get T-boned. So I think a left turn signal right there at the corner of Yukon and Imperial will be beneficial for traffic flow.
Thank you, and I'm sorry about your accident.
I know, me too.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate everybody, and I'm sure I'll see some of you very soon. This is probably my seventh town hall meeting in the district.
I know, probably, yeah. So thank you so much. Please give a warm round of applause for Director Louis Atwell. And so Louis and I will get together probably by the end of this week or next week, and we'll go over these items and make sure that we start working on addressing them. So thank you so much for bringing those to our attention. And so next up, we have Janelle Hartley. She is doing a presentation from Verizon Wireless. I get calls that our reception connectivity Wi-Fi goes out, is not working at times. And so I thought that it would be good to bring the Verizon team here to address some of the issues, let you know what they're working on. I've been working with them for the last several months. So they're gonna give you that update and let you know how we're going to improve our connectivity right here in District Four. So please give a warm round of applause to our Janelle Hartley. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to come here today. I feel like not long ago, like 20 years, I was a member of the community myself. So I'm excited to be back. I am here accompanied with my colleague, John Payne. He's a Senior Manager of Network Performance. And my name is Janelle Hartley, and I'm a Municipal Engagement Partner. I work with the Engineering Department, and I am now your community liaison. Let me get to that. So over the course of the years, you're probably wondering, what has Verizon done for Inglewood, right? Over the, you, you'll probably see a lot of the investments that we've done. You'll see investments with small cells. And those small cells are typically affixed to light poles. You'll see a light pole with, with radios on top, right? Those are small cells. You'll probably also see some larger called macro cells or cell sites that are either sometimes attached to rooftops, sometimes they look like a tree, or sometimes they're just large towers. Those network investments, they're important because they help ensure that they provide connectivity to businesses, to residents, and to visitors that are coming here to Inglewood. Now, I am gonna talk a little bit about some of the solutions. As Councilwoman Folt really talked and, and has really addressed, we're, we're having some connectivity issues. We want to make sure that you can come in and talk about what Verizon is doing to make sure that people have the best coverage. So we're doing a couple of things. The first thing is you may have received a text back in 2020, 2021. If, this is only for Verizon customers, right? With asking for a network extender. This network extender is an in-home device that helps to connect inside of your home to make sure you can improve connectivity in your home. Now, we've heard some people are still having issues inside the home. And we're gonna be launching a second round of outreach. In the next few weeks, you'll probably getting, be getting a text message saying, you know, you qualify for a network extender. If you don't get it, you can call 611. And they'll make sure to, to run, to run an analysis and see if you qualify for that. And again, this is an in-home solution specifically for Verizon cell phones. The second thing that we're doing is we are, we're making modifications to existing small cell site. And what that means is, again, there are small cell sites that are along utility poles. And so we are making sure that some of our site, that we are modifying the equipment on there to make sure that we can accommodate for capacity. So think about a wireless network. Think about it like a freeway, right? If you're on the 405 freeway at 5:00 AM, there's no traffic, you're going through, right? But if you're there around 9:10, you know, during the midst of traffic hour, there's congestion. And so when we make upgrades to our equipment, it helps to make sure that we can help augment some of that congestion. The last and the most important kind of performance that we're doing is we are actually investing into a solution of a permanent facility that will be located at Darby Park. That facility is gonna provide broad-range coverage, right? The small cells' coverage only provide a small range, you know, maybe a couple of feet. But when you provide a broader solution, such as the, the site that we're looking to invest in, that we're working actively with the city, it helps to make sure that more people at longer ranges have access to better coverage. So again, there's three things that we're doing. The first part, the immediate interim solution are these network extenders. The second part are making modifications to our sites. And the third part is the long-term solution with working on a macro site. Now, that takes time. We can't just put a tower up and say, okay, it's on. We have to go through zoning, we have to work with the city. And we appreciate the city's partnership to really work with us as we get that in place. We anticipate by Q, by Q1 of 2024 that that will be up and running. Now, there is a lot of information on this slide. I am not gonna read it. It's just basically tips for those who already have this. I made a copy of that slide for you. And I have a phone number that's there. You will see that copy that is on the front table. Now, the main tips that you want to make sure is that you, this site is connected near a window. You want to make sure you have the optimum internet performance. And if you have any questions, again, we implore you to call 611, our customer service number, so that they can walk you through and troubleshoot. So with... So with that, I have finished my presentation and I'm gonna open it up for any questions.
Can I say one thing? I've driven through the neighborhoods.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, because we got complaints of the neighborhoods. I've driven through it. The outdoor coverage is very poor, especially in the Renaissance neighborhood. And, and, and to the second extent, Briarwood Carlton is a little bit better because the small cells are right there on Kareem Court and Manchester and Pinkay, right? So Verizon, we pride ourselves on being the best network, the most reliable. And that's on us. We miss that for those neighborhoods. So we're gonna fix it. I mean, that's what Janelle has pointed out. So take advantage of the network extender program. Oh, go ahead.
So let's get to District Four. First Avenue and 102nd, right behind the post office. Verizon's service is horrible.
Hundred and four?
In between Third Second and 104th, on First Avenue. Right behind the post office. And, uh, two, uh, south lanes.
Well, we'll have to run some analysis on that and, and find out what's going on in that area.
Yeah, I can get you an answer for that.
Uh, do you wanna come to the mic? Do you wanna come to the mic?
Do you mind coming to the mic? Is there a cost for the network?
Uh, no, it is not. That is the one thing that, again, for Verizon, our commitment is to our customers. And so those who qualify and have Verizon cell phones, when you call 611, it is a free, it, it is a free service. Perfect. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. And if you have any other questions, please reach out to my office regarding the extensions. We're happy to put you in contact with Janelle and her team to make sure that we can improve your connectivity as much as possible. So thank you again, Janelle. Appreciate you. And next up, do you know another topic that I get so many questions about? Oh, just take one guess. Somebody, raise your hand, take one guess. What is it? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. So we are doing a presentation, it's going down. Lisa Trifiletti is here. So I know you guys have questions because y'all call me. So now is your time. Let's get these questions answered and, and then everybody will be cool until we have our next town hall and you're able to ask more questions. So please help me welcome Lisa Trifiletti to the podium. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you. And I really appreciate everybody sticking around to hear about just an update on, on the Inglewood Transit Connector Project. As you know, I, we, we've done, we've, we've done a presentation about the project. So I'll just try to go through a few slides just to give you a status report on how much progress we've made. If you can go to the next slide. Why we're doing this project? Just to remind everybody, we're doing the Inglewood Transit Connector Project because we are, we are working on a comprehensive mobility traffic reduction plan. And because we have the Clippers Arena opening up in 2024, you have SoFi Stadium, and we have the Forum, which is the number two concert venue in the country. You're seeing events happen more and more and, and, and it's gonna be, you know, something that we'll, we'll, we'll experience regularly. And we know that we must solve for traffic congestion in and around the neighborhood, which is what this whole program is designed for. World-class sports and entertainment center you have, but you also have new housing, you have, uh, 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 Employment Center. And we're really looking to have transit that can connect you directly to the Crenshaw Line. And so it's all about, you know, this community, making sure that we have a transit-rich community. And we have been working with all of our transit operators to increase bus service, working on micro-mobility to increase transit for people that, for example, work at the airport, get in that other cars that live in Inglewood, Hawthorne, and Lenox. And this is just another component, including improving bikes and the pedestrian realm. So I just wanted you to know, we see the benefit across the board and we wanted to give you the status on how far we've come. Go to the next slide, please. So again, reminding you, it's a 1.6-mile elevated automated transit system. We have three bidding teams going after this project right now. And it is similar to a system that you would see like in an airport context where you're going from the rental car facilities to the terminals. It would, you know, have very high frequency headways and it can be designed in a way where, uh, before and after an event, you can move up to 11,000 to 12,000 people during the peak hour. It's almost like adding another lane of traffic and so that you can move people in and around. And so, but then on non-event days, it could be scaled to what the need is. And so it's that kind of a system. The last time we were here, we talked about the maintenance facility at the Vons location. And I promised you that we were gonna really work hard at trying to make that change and we're very, we're very, we were successful in doing that. And we listened to you, we listened to the concerns. We, if we can go to the next slide? That maintenance facility, which is a critical facility for any type of system like this, and you see it, again, at LAX, they're building a maintenance facility. It's not a metro facility. This is not, this is just for the storage and maintenance of the vehicles that would be on the system. Will be fully enclosed and integrated into the first station and be camouflage and well-designed so that we have a new front door at the downtown, where we had the downtown station right across the street from the downtown Crenshaw Line. And as a result, we will have, again, single columns all down Market Street. We'll be able to make the turn on Manchester. We will not in any way, shape, or form be disturbing the site where the Vons supermarket, market was. And while we always were very proud that we had a cooperative relationship with them and we were looking to rebuild them, we don't need to do that anymore. And it's, and, and that is just, you know, I just wanted to make sure you knew. We got that environmentally cleared. We talked to all the bidding teams to make sure they can make the maintenance facility work as, as we envisioned and they all can do it. And so I just wanted to make sure you knew that that was now included as part of the project and will be part of the future procurement process. Then when you make the turn, you have your station right across the street from the Forum. And then going down to the Hardy Street Station, you'll have that. And again, the, the, the idea is, is to have all lanes of traffic open to the air and single columns all the way down. And we will design the very last station so that some, some future time, at some point, and it won't be me, I promise, that they can actually connect all the way down to the green line. So that won't, that won't, we won't foreclose on that opportunity to have a fully connected city. But that, we have to survive this first phase, right? So we're preserving for and planning for that eventual connection, but that is something that we just, we'll, we'll make sure that that station could be designed to, to achieve that. Go to the next slide. I heard Louis talk about local hire. We have, just like you saw at the Intuit Dome and at SoFi Stadium, a 35% local hire requirement. We have a project labor agreement with the unions. We will do apprenticeship programs with the schools. It would be, we, we were very blessed, my team and I were part of a program called the Seed School, which is on Vermont and Manchester where they had, Metro had worked on and of the first infrastructure, transportation infrastructure school for kids. And we, they know they have that curriculum. So we're looking at how we can do something very similar so that our children, our youth, our families could take part, not just in the jobs during construction, but think about all the need in Los Angeles for transportation infrastructure and how we can take those programs that exist that are being created right now at the Vermont-Manchester location and doing it here and doing a program like that in Inglewood. We also have a commitment to disadvantaged businesses. We went through the federal process, 16% requirement on top of the 35% local hire. And we have a 30% goal for women-owned, minority-owned, veteran-owned, and again, small business certifications. And that is not just about construction. A lot of times you see projects where they have these requirements for construction. We also have it required for when this program is operational. So if you think about ambassadors, you think about concessionaires, you think about, you know, signage, all of that, that's for ongoing operations. Those are requirements in our contract. So I just wanted to make that point. The next slide. We have business relocation. We have been talking to 41 businesses. It's not 44 because now it's not the Vons and we're not gonna move any, any businesses at the Vons site. But the small businesses and the businesses located at the Hardy Street Station and the very first station across the street where the CVS is, those are businesses that have all been assigned experts in their field. They are first-class business relocation specialists. They're all working right now with them to understand how we can relocate them within the city. In fact, there was a woman who just left and she came up to me and she goes, "What are you doing with Sweet Red Peach?" And she said, "You know, I'm worried about them. I really love them." And I said, "You know what? I, we love them too." I've been talking to her since day one on this project. And she has asked for, since day one, "How can I find a new location?" She was having her own issues at the site and said, "How can we find a new location? How can I benefit from this?" And I actually pulled her up on the phone, had her talk to her outside and knows and heard from her own voice, not from me just saying it, that this is the kind of legit business that we wanna make better in Inglewood. And she has another location nearby where she's looking at and we cannot legally, until we, we have to follow the federal rules, you cannot offer a small business the opportunity to move until you've made an offer to the landowner to acquire his property. So all we're doing right now is planning, planning, talking to everybody, understanding all of their relocation needs, how we can accommodate them so they can stay here locally in a better place, understand their furniture, their, their fixtures, their equipment, understand all of those components, and then working on the appraisals with the two areas where we would have to acquire the land so that when and if we get the federal funding, we're able then to just roll up our sleeves and work with them to find them homes. And as you know, on Market Street, for example, this is an area that we are wholly dedicating so much time and energy and resources to revitalizing and bringing downtown Inglewood back to the great Inglewood that it, that it once was with all of the shops. And there's so many vacancies, unfortunately. We had a meeting today with a number of landowners that own real estate along Market Street and asking them, you know, what would it take for them to reinvest in this area and, and, and build back the retail? There's a lot of need for parking and our project that we have would also deliver much-needed parking. So where we would have the very first station, we right now have it environmentally cleared for 350 surface parking, parking spots. We would also have parking at the corner at Manchester and Market where the Hat and Boots Store is. And unfortunately, that is a building that will have to be demolished and will turn into a pickup and drop-up and parking facility. And we're working very collaboratively with them right now because the, the system cannot make the turn. So those are the kind of parking districts that we are looking to actually develop all along Market Street so that you can see a very vibrant downtown Inglewood. We've gotten about $8.5 million to do streetscape and facade improvements. So working with every one of the, of the, the businesses and the retail and the, and the property owners to improve the, the facades of, of Market Street. So Fox Theater, for example, there's a goal and desire to bring back the Fox Theater, both with a theater and with housing potentially. And that's a historic frontage. And so we have set aside $2 million to help the Fox Theater really put in, you know, a lot of improvements to that. So we're looking at it comprehensively. We also have, for any businesses that is during construction, we set aside another couple million dollars, $5 million right now. We're looking to see if we can get more for business assistance during the construction of the project. But we have to make sure we actually have a project. And so how far have we come? If we can go to the next slide. Well, this tells you a little bit about the facade improvements and how we're looking at parking districts and increasing and beautifying the area with landscape and streetscape and lighting and signage. And so that's part of that program. Go to the next slide. Well, on the project status, we've environmentally cleared the project. We've established a joint powers authority with Metro. Metro is the expert in, in transit design, construction, and operation. So they're advising us and part of the governance structure. We have secured, and my next slide after this will show you, how we have secured to date $865 million. That is a lot of money for a small city to have achieved all of that. And we have to be able to achieve one more billion dollars to be able to make this project go. And we're working right now with the Federal Transit Administration and we will know within the next month or two if we make it through the presidential budget to have achieved that. That means we would have had $1.85 billion invested in the city in transit by the state, by the local government, and, but, well, by the, by the, the metro and by the federal government. And so that's just something that I think is very impressive in a very competitive environment across the entire country. They believe in Inglewood. We also have three bidder teams. And again, I just talked to you about, you know, having all the resources in place to work on relocation and, and real estate acquisitions. Go to the next slide. So these are the three teams we have. We have a team right now that is building over at LAX, a very experienced team. They build people movers across the country. We have another team with the Doppelmeyer Cable Pull System. They build, they have that system that you see like at Oakland Airport and, and in, in that area, you see that's a, that's, that's that kind of transit system there. And then we have another team that is looking also to bring in, I believe, another rubber tire solution that you see at airports across, across the world. And so, next slide. So this gives you a little bit, and I'm sorry you can't see this, but we'll make this available to you. This gives you a little bit about all the different funding sources that we have secured to date. And as you can see, right now, the state has invested, I wanna say, close to $500 million. And so with all of these funds together, with the, the federal funds that we're looking to get, and again, we'll know a little bit more in the next two months, then this project will be able to go through procurement. And our goal is to have this constructed and completed before the Olympics because you're gonna be on the world stage. Opening and closing ceremonies at the stadium. You have a number of events at the Forum. The, I think swimming is being contemplated at SoFi Stadium and then basketball at the, at the Clippers Arena. So you have a lot of venues where, where, this is not just for the Olympics. It's just our goal is to be operational by the Olympics. Go to the next slide. So this gives you a little bit about the timeline and where we are. Upon receiving the notice, if we made the presidential budget, we'll put out the procurement. And then the three bidder teams, we know, will, will get their bids and we're hoping to have that sometime in the fall with the idea of getting a full funding grant agreement in place for construction to begin by the first of 2024. Next slide. And so our commitment is to be here every time you have a town hall meeting. We have, I'm seeing familiar faces. I've been in living rooms, at block clubs, at rotary clubs, working with the chamber, working with, you know, we wanna work with the schools, work with everybody so that as we're doing this, and art programs, all of that, so that as we're actually getting forward, moving forward to, to contract, award, and implementation, we are keeping you in the loop all, every step of the way, including making sure you have all the information on when, when construction would begin. So I think that is our commitment and that's the progress we've made and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Lisa? Do you mind going to the mic, sir? I'm sorry, it's just for the stream. We wanna make sure that they hear the question.
Thank you again for that update. Were we eligible for President Biden's Build Back Better Fund? Is that part of that 765 million?
We got, I think part of their Build Back Better is they funded this capital investment grant program at a higher, at a higher level. And so this program that we're going through right now to apply for grants always existed, but it's funded at a higher level because of the Biden administration.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yep.
That's amazing, isn't it? That... That's amazing, isn't it, that Inglewood got some of the Build Back Better funds?
You also won $15 million, a smaller fund, from the US DOT under Secretary Buttigieg. And just so you know, we were one of 15 awardees out of 755 projects across the country. And it's because of all of the things that it does for air quality. I mean, this is a community, I worked in, you guys, many of you know, I was at LAX, I helped, worked on the sound insulation program here in 2015, $100 million to sound insulate your homes. In the shadow of LAX, under the flight path, better air quality, better environmental, greenhouse gas reduction happening right here in a neighborhood where people want to invest here, and you have a proven track record of doing it in a way that benefits the local community. And so they, we won out of 15, out of 750 people.
That's amazing. Do we have any other questions for Lisa?
Sure.
Yes, please. Please.
Real quick, because you mentioned it about the insulation, because you all stopped right at my house, and, you know, the planes are now, they've moved over more over our house. And so I'm wondering, is there any more money to extend that program to other homes? Because the traffic has changed.
Well, what I'll do, because I don't wear that hat anymore, I don't work at Lawa anymore, thank God, I work with you. I didn't say that. I will get your contact information, and we'll set you up with Maria T. Torriente on my team. We're working on sound insulation, actually in El Segundo. Let us get your contact information, and let's figure out how we can help you. Yeah, sure.
All right. Thank you. Let's give.
Oh, you have it too? Okay. Okay.
Can you send it to the council?
Sure, sure.
Yes, I would love to. I could definitely do that.
That's a very important, uh, important for us, because I tried for years, and I was told that the dust level was not high enough. So I had to come out of my pocket to put windows and doors in my house and can actually be banned.
And actually, I will tell you that I did have Sound Installation present at our last town hall. So, and they did take the names of District Four residents to follow up, and they're working on trying to extend the program. So I'm happy to provide those updates in my next newsletter. Can we give Lisa a round of applause? Okay, hang in there with me, we have one more update, and this is a good one too. I know you guys want to hear this one. So we have Bridget Calderon from the Intuit Dome, and she's going to give some updates on the next huge venue happening in District Four, and let you know, and I would ask that one or, somebody in the audience, ask her about the season passes and when we can start trying to buy those too. But that's just between you and me. So let's invite Bridget Calderon up. Come on up, let's give her a round of applause. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try to keep it brief, I know I'm the last presenter. So I'm Bridget Calderon, I am the Director of Community Engagement for Urban Simias. I am also a part of the Community Engagement Team for Intuit Dome. Also here Sylvia Jacobs from the Robert Group, who's my colleague on the project as well. Sylvia. Urban Simias and the Robert Group are consultants working directly under the LA Clippers. Intuit Dome is set to be completed by summer, late summer of 2024. Yes, thank you. I know a lot of you have seen the construction that's going on across the street. There's the pedestrian bridge now that just went up sort of overnight. You know, some people went to bed, and by the time they woke up, the bridge was there. So there's a lot going on over there. There's also a few things that we've been working on to keep the engagement going with the Inglewood community and also our neighbors. So our team was present at the Women Rock Event that Councilwoman Falk and the City Clerk Ayesha Thompson put together. Thank you also to Malcolm, who put in a lot of work for that event, and it was really amazing. It was, thank you for letting us always be a part of everything that you guys do. So for our team, it's really important to be present in as much community events that there are, because it provides the residents with the opportunity to ask us any questions on the project, but also give us some feedback. Over the last two years, our team has had community meetings. The Councilwoman was at our last meeting in May. We also have a community meeting coming up, and it's going to be Thursday, August 3rd, at 6:00 PM, and our meetings are held at Dolores Huerta Elementary School. Our meetings, we helped put together with the AECOM Turner Joint Venture Team colleagues. They are in charge of the construction aspect of the project. The weekly construction notice contains any construction updates for the following week. We distribute those to nearly 1,000 households around the project. That includes any information that might affect traffic for the residents, so we want to make sure that we let everybody know of anything that's going on. Also quarterly, we create a newsletter, which I have right here, we also have some in the front area. The newsletter contains like general project information, it also has minority and disadvantaged business spotlights that we do on contractors and subcontractors that are currently working on site. There's also information for anybody that's interested in getting into construction. It's PDA Consulting are the ones that are in charge of that for the project. And there's also our contact information. For anybody that, you know, wants to keep updated on the project, you can visit our website at www.builtintuadome.com. And if anyone has any, you know, complaints or anything that they would like to voice their concerns to our team, we can also be reached at 323-638-9008. That is our Intuit Dome informational line. That goes directly to me, so I'll be happy to answer any questions. You can also follow us on Facebook and Instagram at @buildintuadome. And if anybody has any questions on the project? Yes?
Yes. And you just invited us. You're really great, Councilwoman. And especially for me, we impolish, and I understand to the local residents, but there's people that travel back there.
Right. Absolutely.
So like, having that open on your site, that we can have access, I know not everyone may not have internet or access, but that's another avenue, because of those of us that do have it, we can go to your site, and that would be helpful to us. We can definitely, and then specifically, if that's something, like the weekly, it's a
Yeah, so we usually have the, we have the graphic updated usually by Wednesday of every week. And I know the Councilwoman, usually on Thursdays when the newsletter comes out. So we could definitely try to coordinate that, so they can get it and they could include it in the newsletter. Yeah, I just made a note of that as well. Thank you so much for that feedback.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman.
It's the best, like, how do we get in the mix? What's, can you give us updates on?
Yes, so there's currently season passes for the Intuit Dome that are, that are available. You can go on to the Clippers MBA website, and you can start, you know, placing those orders. And it's actually, it's less expensive if you do it now than when it starts getting closer, as when the arena opens, it'll, you know, the prices will usually go up. Yeah, so they are available.
One of our constituents wanted the website for the season passes, is what she asked for. My question is, and forgive me because I've missed meetings, because I have meetings on the night that they have meetings, but what contingencies has been put in there for residents that live in Inglewood, right? So I'm talking about discounts on something maybe as you purchase, and what benefits are we getting as residents of Inglewood from all of this? Because so far, it's been nothing but cost on us, not any financial benefits. And when I'm talking about cost for another night, that's having to pay to park in front of your own house, that's another, that's another story. Sales tax being high, that's another story. What kind of benefits are we getting, if there are any?
Yeah, so I'm glad you asked that. But just to make it clear, this project has all been privately funded. There hasn't been any taxpayer money or anything used towards that. It's been funded by Mr. Steve Ballmer. But that's one of the things that we've actually been talking about along, you know, I think, I've been working on this project for about five and a half years. So I think that even early on, that's something that we want to put in place, is to make sure that the residents get some kind of discount, or, you know, we'll also be giving away tickets to the community, so that they could come and experience to watch a basketball game at the arena. So that's something that we definitely do. And we currently have been doing that as well. We reach out to organizations, Cindar, you know, Eller, who has a foundation called the Glass Slipper Foundation. You know, we've reached out to the, to her many times to ask, you know, can we have the teens come and, you know, participate in the game? Now that it's going to be in Inglewood, it'll be a little different, and we'll definitely make sure to reach out to the people that are living in the area.
All right, let's keep reaching the wonderful Thank you. I will definitely coordinate to get that information in the newsletter, so hopefully you'll see that. Yes, the main site, yes. Will do. I hear you loud and clear. So that was our last presentation. I hope and pray that you all received great information to assist you and learned more about what's happening in District Four. Before we conclude, I do have another slide I want to share with you. So I want you all to stay connected. Now, first of all, did everybody get the kitchen magnet? Did you, raise your hand if you got a kitchen mag. Okay, Sandra got, she raised it, okay. If you did not get the kitchen magnet, I want you to make sure you get one, because it has all of the contact information, quick reference numbers for you to be able to contact us for whatever reason you need. So it has the graffiti removal number, it has IPD, it has all of the different contact numbers to make it just a quick reference. And I was just thinking, what's the best way to provide the contact information and make it useful for you and easily accessible? So that's the reason why I came up with that kitchen magnet. So if you did not get it, please get one, and then I think we have extras, so you can grab one for your neighbor next door if you want to. They're outside, yes. And so these are the, this is the, how to stay connected with District Four. So here's my email address, dfaulk@cityofinglewood.org. When you send me an email, please also include Malcolm. Malcolm, stand up. This is my new deputy. I, yes, give him a round of applause. He's doing a great job. He put most of this together for me, and so I appreciate him. Send both of us an email, because he is, you know, he might get to his email faster than I might, depending on what's happening in the city. We want to be responsive. We want to make sure that if you're having a concern or issue, that we respond to you. We also have a phone number, 310-412-8605. Feel free to reach out to us, call Malcolm, let him know. Ms. Hibler was here, she left, she calls every other week. So trust in me, I'm not playing, so call us or email us, let us know what's happening. Another thing that I want to share with you all is that I know that there's been, I've received some, some comments that, you know, maybe you had an issue, you wanted to know the best way to connect with my office and to get a response. And so please, 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 make sure you send us an email, and then let us know what's happening. What I love to do is, just like in the case of the situation that happened with the resident, the senior, that unfortunately suffered a medical condition and then had to go to a facility, and some squatters moved in, I want to work with you to resolve issues as soon as possible. Let me know. I want to get together with you and with your neighbors. We're going to sit down, and we'll talk about the issues, and then I will try and see the best way to resolve the issues. That's how I work. And so I am available, I think I'm pretty friendly. I know a lot of you guys have, and I'm trying to get to know all of our District Four residents. I'm here, I'm available, and I definitely want to serve you and be responsive. So just reach out, let me know, and I will meet with you and your neighbors to get your issues resolved. So that will conclude our District Four Town Hall. And what I will do is, I'll probably have one more before the year ends, and maybe another few months, we'll have different presenters and different presentations to keep you all informed and connected. Please make sure that you are signed up to get the newsletter. It's very simple to do, just go to my website and then click on the link that says, sign up for the email distribution, and you just put your contact information in there, and you'll start getting my newsletters and all information on what's happening. And, I'm sorry? Or call the office, and Malcolm will do it for you. So if you're not on a laptop, you know, if you don't have a lap, working laptop, or if you're not on social media, you're not connected with the computer regularly, feel free to just call Malcolm, and he'll help you get connected. Because I know some of our seniors may not be online as much as some of the younger residents. So we will work with everybody in our district to make sure everybody gets the information, okay? So thank you all so much, I appreciate you all, and I will see you again very soon. Thank you.